The time is now five oh three. Good evening and welcome to the May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Policy and Governance Committee meeting. I am Dr. Felton Moss, Committee Chair and District Seven Board Member. It brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting and I look forward to our work tonight. For those of you who are unable to observe now, the meeting is being recorded and can be assessed on the PGCPS YouTube channel for later viewing. At this time, Ms. Adley, will you please call the role?
Dr. Moss.
Present.
Mr. Briggs.
Present.
Ms. Buddha Shredder. Ms. Walker.
Present.
And Chair Jackson. We have three present.
With a quorum present, the Policy and Governance Committee will come to order. Tonight we'll adopt the agenda. The Chair wants to inform the public that the agenda for this evening will vary slightly to be able to accommodate our visiting speakers. After Agenda Two Point One Public Comments, the Committee will consider a presentation on Agenda Item Five Point Three, Policy Three Three Two Three Purchasing, then an overview of Policy, of overview of Four Point Six, Policy Fifty One Twenty Two Interscholastic and Extracurricular Activities. Additionally, the policies under Category Six Point Oh were removed from the agenda to allow the public additional time to provide public comments as the forms were open late. So just want to flag for folks, we opened the forms late on those policies. So in order to be in compliance, we needed to extend the window for you to be able to offer comments. So I did want to lay that out tonight. Committee members, if there are no objections, the Committee shall adopt the May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting agenda as amended, or if committee members would like to add anything, we don't put that in the note, but I should have said that earlier. But if there are no objections, the Committee shall adopt the May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting agenda as amended.
I did want to add an agenda item. I'm so sorry. I did not send it in advance. I was wondering if we could just add a quick topic, no more than five minutes about Eric's ID doll, if that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Board members, if there are no objections, we shall adopt the amended agenda to include provision around Eric, a discussion around Eric's law. Are there any objections? Seeing that there are no objections, the May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting agenda is adopted as amended. And Board Member Walker, please flag for me when we get to that time if I forget it.
Absolutely. I'm gonna ask Cindy to flag for us, just in case we both forget, but I am all in. Thank you, Ms. Adley.
All right. Let's approve the meeting minutes. If there are no corrections, the Committee shall approve the April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting minutes as distributed. Do any committee members have any amendments? Or corrections? Seeing that there are no corrections, the minute to approve. We'll now move to public comment. There are three live speakers this evening. Registered public comment speakers can be live, pre-recorded, video, audio, or written to our public commenters. You have registered to speak in a public comment forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments, but will not discuss them. You will have three minutes to make your presentations. Speaking time may not be relinquished to another registered or unregistered individual. You also may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be muted and you may be removed from the meeting. You are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, principal, superintendent, etc. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public participation process to move smoothly. Our live speakers are, first up, Yolanda Brown for the topic of Wise Athletic Booster Club, for Wise Athletic Booster Club, speaking on Four Point Six, Policy Fifty One Twenty Two Interscholastic and Extracurricular Activities. Is Yolanda Brown with us tonight?
Yes, I am. I had to go pick my daughter up, but let me pull over. I'm so sorry.
You're good. When you pull over, Ms. Brown, I'll start the timer. How about that?
Thank you so much. I'm sorry, y'all. Pulling over to good old Riverdale Baptist. Here we go. All right. Good evening. All right, here we go. Sorry, y'all. Good evening. I really just, oh, Yolanda Brown, Dr. Henry A. Wise High School, the Athletic Booster Club, a very concerned parent of all of our athletes and scholars. I think one of the biggest things that I wanted to point out this evening is the the shared, the shared housing form and as it relates to our athletes. Specifically, as I was looking over the form, and one thing that stuck out to me was Section C of the form, which states that the parent has to sign this affidavit, and it states that the children or students are residing with me or us on a full-time basis. The entire form, however, leads a parent, I guess, to think that that child, like this is a shared housing form, but full-time basis, so it seems to contradict, and I think that that leads a lot to confusion with the parents. The name of the form, of course, is misleading because is it really a shared house? Or is it dual housing? Because that parent may very well own multiple properties. Another thing to point out is, I'm not sure if the county is taking into account that a lot of our children are of divorced parents. And those parents nowadays, the courts are actually awarding fifty-fifty custody. So that child has to, you know, seven and seven, equal custody to their parent. So they have one parent that very well may live in the Largo residency or another parent that may live in the Wise community. How does the county go about deciding which parent is the legal address, if you will? Because parents are sharing both physical, legal, educational, all of these, and it kind of just, it's not a good look that we are not supporting co-parenting and all of that. So those are really the just two big points of mine that I really wanted to make, just taking into account. Also, it seems that every time this happens with our athletic community, it's always someone reporting things right before the championship. And I just find that quite interesting, and I believe that once that, once that athlete has been certified by the Athletic Director's Office, there should be about a three to five day window after that, at the beginning of the season, if you will. Once those certifications are done, there should be a three to five day window for you to report. But after that, that's it. I'm done.
Thank you so much, Ms. Brown. Please dress.
Thank you. I got you. Thank you so much.
Great. Our next speaker is Jason Gordon, individual speaking on policy and governance. Jason, I'll begin when you're ready.
All right. Good evening. I was hesitant about speaking before you about this topic because I have been told by upper leadership that I should watch what I say since I have aspirations to someday be in upper leadership positions and that I tend to talk very lawyerly. My comments about athletic policies and procedures are not foreign to those in athletics as I have brought them up in numerous Athletic Director Association meetings and even in a meeting with area office leadership. Athletics is one of the highest performing educational programs in this county with a ninety-five plus percent graduation rate in a four-year cohort and seventy-plus percent college-going rate with at least thirty percent of those receiving some sort of athletic-aided scholarships. So the first issue that I have is that in July of two thousand and nineteen, Administrative Procedure Fifty One Fifty Nine was adjusted to state that Prince George's County Athletic Association, the PGCAA, should report directly to the CEO, their designee, and the coordinating supervisor. Since that changed, the Office of Athletics has operated out of the Area Three Office under the leadership there. The Administrative Procedure states that in the Procedure section that the high school administrators, athletic directors, and coaches shall adhere to all rules and regulations outlined in the Prince George's County Public Schools High School Athletic Handbook as well as Administrative Procedure. This line points to the Association, towards the handbook for the PGCAA, which consists of constitution and bylaws which state that in order to make amendments to the handbook, it needs to be voted on by the Association and receive a majority vote. In order to make changes to the bylaws, it has to be approved by a sixty percent vote. Administrative Procedures do supersede the constitution and bylaws, but in our profession, they have never been produced in private without giving those responsible for carrying it out, the members of the Association, input along with principals and administrators. Upon pointing this out to leadership, the Administrative Procedure Fifty One Fifty Nine was then removed from the county website in two thousand and twenty-three and has not been updated or replaced since. Ever since the return of athletics from COVID-nineteen, changes in leadership in the Office of Athletics in the two thousand and twenty, twenty, twenty-one school year, the handbook has not been properly vetted or amended by the Association, though they have been numerous changes that included the elimination of due process for infractions, eligibility changes, transfer processes and changes, and the allowance of anonymous allegations, just to name a few. Also, we as a county did not put in place the board policy changes that occurred in October of twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one to take effect, that were to take effect in July of two thousand and twenty-two when it relates to eligibility. The fact that there has not been proper vetting and implementation of these changes, county leadership has decided to hang their hat on creating policies and procedures that do not improve the morale or condition of athletics. We have noticed that there's been at least one catastrophic and/or public negative event since the change in leadership due to this lack of focus. Solution, the PGCAA needs to be returned to the involvement of all policy and procedures production, and the previous not properly ratified changes need to be removed to allow for due process infraction hearings and procedures to be reestablished. The Office of Athletics should be returned to its focus on matters that affect athletics as it has been involved in other areas such as summer school, graduation, and other matters.
Which, oh. I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have to stop you. We've exceeded the time. I will tell you, there's still an opportunity to submit this to the Policy and Governance Committee in terms of your written testimony.
Yes, sir.
To get to the committee, but in the interest of time and in the interest of the quorum, I have to stop you. So I do apologize. Okay?
I will submit because it's a written statement. So I got it.
Please submit it to us. We'd love to have your written comments.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Our final public commenter is Renetta Pace, individual speaking on policy and governance.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to express my concern regarding ongoing issues with the athletics department in terms of how there does not seem to be any transparency with anonymous calls or just the way that a lot of the teams, various schools, student athletes have been unjustly stripped of opportunities such as Wise High School. I felt that there should be a moratorium placed after a certain time or after the athletics department has stated that they have vetted the players to play. They all have to be approved. So why would we let an anonymous caller call in to complain about someone living out of the school zone twenty days before a team is supposed to play for a county championship? To me, that seems very cold and cruel. It just seems like there are policies being created as we go along. These things are not documented in the student handbook or the athletics handbook. The admitted administrative error seems to be something that has been consistent. It doesn't seem like there is any due diligence on their end or no one's following up to make sure that these administrative errors don't continue. No one's thinking about the mental health of the student athletes. We have kids bringing guns to school. We have kids selling drugs in school. You have kids that are a part of a program doing something that is keeping them off the street and productive, but we snatch monumental moments from them, seniors. I got wind of an email that Mr., that a person submitted to his athletic directors stating that an anonymous call had been made on a middle school playoffs. This person decided that they were not going to move forward with the anonymous call because it was so close to playoffs. Why is that granted to middle schoolers where it doesn't even count, but that same courtesy wasn't granted to high school seniors who have the opportunity to play on D-one, D-two, D-three level basketball? It's like we're working against our student body. We're not here to support, motivate, and encourage our kids to go to college. We're stripping opportunities from them, once-in-a-lifetime opportunities from them, just to make a point. But who are we making the points to? Because you shine a light on something does not mean that you're working with integrity. A lot of, okay, was that my three, my three minutes?
You finish your thoughts since I allowed the other gentleman. So I want to make sure I'm fair. So finish your thought.
In closing, it just seems that there's no standardized compliance policy. Again, how did one person within the same department decide we're not going to move forward with addressing an anonymous complaint? However, you took a season from a team that went twenty and two that was getting ready to go play a huge county championship game with one day's notice. To me, that was just very intentional.
Thank you, Ms. Pace, for your comments, and if you do have additional comments, please feel free to share those in writing with the committee. I believe we'd love to have them. Thank you so much for joining us. Committee members, if there are no objections, there is one individual who has requested to speak that had an issue with signing up. So long as there are no objections from the committee, I do want to allow them to speak. So are there any objections from the committee? Seeing that there are no objections, because the committee will have one final public commenter, and that is Lisa Hargrove. Are you, Cindy, did we bring Lisa Hargrove over? Okay, thank you so much. Lisa, we'll begin when you start talking.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you, Dr. Moss. I, you know, I want to piggyback on one of the other comments that was made earlier today, and that was, you know, the understanding of having the nuanced family in the Prince George's County community, right? So I know someone mentioned whether they're divorced, whether they're separated. Who determines precisely? I don't think the Prince George's County Athletic Department should be able to determine the validity of a family arrangement. The cause for me is that I do not believe that they care whether or not a student lives within the boundaries because in my instance, I sent them countless hours of footage of a ring camera that shows this student lives with said family members and father and grandparents, but they did not care. It was more of a situation where they would rather deal with a gotcha moment and proceed without giving us the due diligence that we were, we should have been granted. There was no reason why an appeal process was not, you know, thoroughly thought out in the way that it should have been. I mean, we were getting kind of thrown in different directions. One email that I received said that we were to send a written documentation, a written letter, I'm sorry, a written letter to the superintendent. You know, then other folks said, well, it could have been emailed. There's just so much inconsistency with that department, right? And so once again, I do not believe that it is in the best interests of the children or the families with the way that the current system is operating, right? Do you really, are you really interested in whether the kid lives there or not? Or what is the documentation that you need? What additional documentation that you need to determine that? Are, you know, do you need to speak to the actual counsel? You know, the family counselor to determine what the family situation is? I just believe that they did not show any concern for our particular family situation, and they decided to not give us the correct, I would say, appeals process that we believe that we should have been granted. First and foremost, you show up a week before playoffs to say, well, we're gonna do an investigation. There was an investigation for him to play at the beginning of the school year. And so I don't understand what the process is. It's not transparent. It's almost like, okay, you guys did your due diligence at the beginning of the season, but then came back a week before playoffs and said, well, no, this was not accurate. I just don't understand how they are allowed to continue to operate in this manner. And I feel like at this point, if this is happening every year, if this is happening so often, that there should be some changes to the bylaws where you can, one, account for a more nuanced family arrangement, and, two, that it is transparent. You can't send somebody an email saying, put this in a handwritten letter to the superintendent, and there's nowhere that that is stated in the bylaws. So we need some consistency here.
Thank you, Ms. Hargrove, for your comments. As I shared with others, if you have additional comments that you want to share, our testimony email is available. I do want to thank all the public commenters tonight for your, you know, your time and your effort into this work. It certainly helps the board as we continue to review relevant policies. At this time tonight, we are gonna review Board Agenda Item Five Point Three, which is purchasing. Then we will review Agenda Item Four Point Six, Policy Fifty One Twenty Two Interscholastic and Extracurricular Activities. Just want to let committee members know, both of these will come with a presentation. So we do have the Athletics Office, who has graced us with their presence tonight, to be able to offer a presentation around this. But we'll start with the purchasing policy. Just a reminder, committee members, we revisited this last time. We moved it along and we asked the administration to come back with a presentation. So at this time, the Chair recognizes Ms. Welsh to introduce her guest speakers to present on Agenda Item Five Point Three Thirty Three Twenty Three Purchasing. Ms. Welsh?
Good evening. So if you want, I will have Dr. Johnson first present, or Director Johnson present her presentation, followed by some minor changes that were made to the policy based on the conversation from the last meeting. And then I would like to review the superintendent's memo because it does present the administration's position on the committee's recommend proposals for changes to the policy. So without wasting any time, I'm sorry.
One second. Do we have a copy of the superintendent's memo?
It should be on the, on the board docs.
Okay, cool. Maybe I'm overlooking it. My apologies.
No, I, Cindy.
Okay, it's me. It's me. I'm the problem. Thank you.
Okay, that's okay. So normally I have short memos, but this one's pretty long, so I thought it was important to address the different aspects. But since we do have Director Johnson with us tonight, that's first, that her present her PowerPoint because it did, what she did was gather data to address some of the questions that the committee members had at the last meeting. So Director Johnson?
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I kind of thought that this was actually, Robin was going to, you know, present the changes that we had to thirty-three, twenty-three first, and then this, you know, presentation, which were some of the questions that you all asked, you know, would kind of make a little bit more sense because you all asked, you know, particular questions on how this impacted. And we talked about, you know, the last time that we talked is that we did have the FY twenty-four data completed and that we would share that. And FY twenty-five is not complete yet, and so as soon as we're able to, you know, get that and look at the data, we will definitely be able to share, show those comparisons between FY twenty-four and what we did and then FY twenty-five. I did put on the first slide was, well, that's, yeah, was just our mission statement. And I'm sure that you all are definitely very well aware of our, of our message statement and that we definitely try to make sure that, you know, we exercise proper financial stewardship, you know, as we're using these taxpayer dollars in addition to supporting the students here at PGCPS. So I, the next slide, please. So on that slide, I put just a snippet of the thresholds that are in our current manual, our purchasing manual, and it talks about the different thresholds, and then it also, at the bottom, it talks about, you know, some of the exceptions. And so I know that some of you all have reviewed these because those are the areas of concern and discussion from thirty-three, twenty-three that we have mentioned. You know, we have tried to raise some limits, and the board has said, you know, no to some of those limits, you know, yes to some of those limits. So the next slide is how we come into like part of the discussion that we had and what we had, what we talked about in the last Governance Committee. And so you asked, you know, like how many contracts are awarded under fifty thousand dollars? And so in FY twenty-four, you can see that we had one thousand two hundred and ninety-four consultant agreements that were awarded in FY twenty-four, and all of them were under the fifty thousand dollar threshold. We had one emergency that was issued, one IFB that was issued, and actually two, actually, ICP rider contracts that were issued under that fifty thousand dollar threshold mark. You also asked, Dr. Moss, like, tell me how many of those, especially in the non-bid consultant contracts, were between forty-five thousand and fifty thousand, just right under that cusp? And so that number of contracts was seventeen contracts that were in that range. So that you could see, because that was a definitely a question that you asked. And so then we go to the next slide, which is over fifty thousand dollars because, you know, that is where we spent a lot of discussion. And so we wanted to see like what, how many contracts were we, had we awarded that were over fifty thousand dollars? And as you can see, you know, we have them spread out by types, which are your non-bid contracts. Those were four hundred and thirty-one contracts. You got the emergency contracts, which were seven. We issued a hundred, I mean, I'm sorry, I wish it were a hundred and, any number of IFBs, but only twenty-three IFBs. RFPs, we issued eleven, and then RFQs, we issued one, and then for the ICPAs, we issued a hundred and fourteen of them. And then you can see over there what the total dollar amounts were that we had for the awards of those. The other question that you asked was that, tell me, you know, how many of those contracts actually went to the board? And so the next slide is only for those over fifty thousand of what actually was presented to the board. And so we have here where we have the non-bid contracts, there were seventy-eight contracts that did not get board approval, but then there were also, let me go down the list where it's talked about not board approval, and then we can talk about what the definition of not required. And then we also had seven emergencies, and then for the ICPA agreements, we had a hundred and eight that did not go to board approval. And so now let's talk about what a definition is for something that did not require board approval. So if you go back to thirty-three, twenty-three, there's a section four where it talks about standards, and in that standards, it tells you the different thresholds that were on the slide before, but it also talks about, you know, if it, if it was awarded to the lowest bidder, if, that it did not require board approval, if it was awarded to the highest bidder. So all of those rules were looked at in that section, and then that is how we got to that number of the total of three hundred and eighty-nine that did not require board approval that were awarded in FY twenty-four. There were some other ones that did require, that were, that did have board approval. At the time, we did not check, but there are incidences where we would send a contract to the board, even if it may or may not. um send a contract to the board, um even if it may or may not be in a category where um it does not require board approval. So I definitely just wanted to share that. You also asked a question that if we were to change our board policy thirty-three twenty-three and that all's contract actions over fifty thousand would require board approval? Like, what would that look like? How did we quantify that? And so if you look um at this last slide that is up there, um and if the standards are changed and reduced in section four, then that number would be um five hundred and, oh, I didn't write it down, but it would be the one hundred and ninety-two um plus the three hundred and eighty-nine that would then come to the board. At any given fiscal year. Um, so, um, again, this just really addressed some of the questions that you all had. Um, and then that is the rest of the presentation. If you don't don't have any questions, I can turn it back over to uh Ms. Welsh.
Uh, thank you so much for for pulling this together. I'm gonna see if my colleagues have any questions for you. Um, and then we can get the superintendent's memo. Um, I do want to outline that I do believe we requested not just for the fifty thousand threshold. The fifty thousand threshold, so so the committee requested not just for the fifty thousand threshold. The administration requested to move from a fifty thousand threshold to a hundred thousand. And our recommended policy was to leave it at fifty thousand. You also requested to uh be at five hundred thousand for, you know, for consultants and whatnot. And our proposal and what's currently in the revised policy brings at the two fifty. And so, Ms. Johnson, I do appreciate you speaking to one element, but uh we were wanting to know about the other exceptions that are embedded. I know you're probably not prepared to do that. Um, but we did request the other exceptions as outlined in subsection four of the policy, what the impact would be around that. And so it looks like we only looked at the fifty thousand, which is currently in board policy. And you all are requesting to go up and have more authority um at, you know, at a hundred thousand. So um, do you know when we might be able to get the other exclusions? Because I I do believe that is what we requested because there were shifts in the other elements of the policy. And then I'll take questions from the committee. But I do just want to clarify what was asked, um, that we didn't get that in totality.
And and so my apologies for not getting all of that in totality. We did, we did have a lot of healthy discussions. So, um so you would ask about, you know, a deadline, and especially since we're at the end of the fiscal year, we're trying so hard to uh close out our contracts. But um at least uh at least a week so that I can um pull that data together, if that's okay.
We'll catch you in June. I give you two weeks, Ms. Johnson.
Oh, that that that's perfect.
I hear I hear your voice. I hear your voice. Board member Walker, your hand, and then board member Briggs. Board member Walker?
Yes, thank you so much. I had to find it on me button. Thank you. Appreciate it. You know, thank you so much, um, Ms. Johnson. So appreciate uh the input that you gave to us. Um, one of the things, I think one of the gaps is really being clear with you on what um we're trying to solve with the requests that we're giving you. So whether it's what we're articulating out, but maybe the end state of what we're trying to get at the end of the day. I think one of the thing, it's multiple as uh um board member Moss just outlined. But one of the things I was also trying to do was um evaluate how much more work with the decrease in what we start to see as a board, which is the recommendation on what we start to approve as a board with that add by way of time, resources, et cetera, and um timing for execution of the purchases order to make sure that we can do that as a board and at least count that into what our processes and systems look like. Although we will adjust on our side, it is important that we say, hey, this might add five hundred more. I'm making it up. A hundred more um RFPs to what you all will be approving at the board level so that we can pace ourselves and make sure that we can do that for work workload perspective. So that, do you understand the question of what I'm trying to solve for, at least from my perspective? I want to solve for what is this add by way of additional fiduciary responsibilities, which is in our realm to do. I want to understand what that means by way of the work that the board has so that leadership like Mr. Briggs, vice chair and the chair can take a look at and make sure that they add that into our um executive board meetings. And we have the appropriate time to do that alongside with um Dr. Moss is asking as well. It's gonna be really helpful for us to make the determination of where we go from here. Oh, thank you. I just wanted to make sure you were, I don't know if you were clear on that when you um were doing yours. I know the fifty thousand dollar mark was on there, but we also had some other thresholds that we wanted to see. Um, just so that we can outline, hey, you all approve, you know, what would be good, actually. You all approve at this level right now, and this is how many cases you all look at on a on an annual basis. I'm gonna make it up or half a year basis. Um, what you're requesting is to go to this dollar amount, which will now add an additional two hundred to your um workload that you have. So that now we can make the determination of how we work within that organizational structure to be able to be able to have additional fiduciary responsibilities, which was the request of what Dr. Moss had inside of his time.
Yeah, thank you, Board Member Walker. One of the things I just want to say to the general public, uh, Ms. Johnson, I appreciate you being here. Ms. Johnson is fairly new, folks. Um, and we're thankful to have her. She she ain't been with us a full year yet, I don't think. Uh, and so she's just onboarding. So uh, we appreciate you getting up to speed uh this quickly, Ms. Johnson. So I did wanna wanna say that, uh, which is why I was like, you gonna need more than a week. Um, but I just wanted to acknowledge that she is she is fairly new to PGCPS, and we're thankful to have her here. Um, so Board Member Briggs.
Hey, thank you so much, Chair Moss. Um, Ms. Johnson, first, before I I start, I want to just make sure I get your title right, because I'm I know you're not a chief, but I want to make sure I know that what the title is. Director Johnson?
So, um, Director of Purchasing and Supply Services is my title.
Okay, I'm I'm gonna call you Director Johnson, but I want to also echo the thanks um for you being here today. Um, I did want to, I guess for me, and I and I also want to say that you all do such technical work that you have like your own jargon, all of the acronyms that you had. And I was like, ICFP, I think I, or ICPA. I was like, I think I know what that is, but I know just for for the public sake, I'm gonna say that that's the, I think that's the intergovernmental cooperative agreement. Right? And then I think the um the other one, I forget which one it was, but just want to clarify that. It always is helpful, I think, to give that context. Um, because, you know, we all have like a thousand different acronyms. The the last thing I wanted to say was that the increases that existed, um, so that were that were kind of in the revised language in the policy. And this may be to you, um, Director Johnson, or to Ms. Welsh. But I believe that was based on state law. I think there were some increases. This one to clarify, like, was the increase based on the state law? And then if you could just kind of provide um or a change to state law. And then if you could just provide some context on like how this would impact your office. So like, if we had, if the board had to, you know, look over um kind of a laundry list of like, you know, approvals, contracts, whatever it may be for consultants. I know we've had this discussion before, and I know that we have a new team, so I think this is really relevant for us to have this conversation. But um I know sometimes that can hold you off office up. So I just want to clarify, like, can you speak to some of the kind of, you know, impacts that this would have on your office if we were to have this really um kind of substantial list um come to us? Um, please, thank you.
Uh, yes, we can. I can provide that information. Um, you know, again, um you know, thank you for, you know, providing some more context to it. Um, so that I can provide you all the information in which you all uh need to make a decision. Um, and how, you know, we move forward um with the policy.
Okay.
I just want to, uh, just so, and Ms. Welsh, I think this is a great opportunity for you to come in and present the superintendent's memo. But just for the general public's sake, you would have had to be at our last meeting to follow this conversation. The re- the administration um in the exceptions clause um recommended moving from a one million dollar threshold to a two million dollar threshold. Um, when it comes to buying instructional materials from instructional and staff development contracted services. The current po- policy had them not having to come to board with anything over five hundred thousand. The recommended policy change would be two fifty. And then for professional services, um, it used to be two fifty as well, and it was brought down to one fifty. And so the administration is giving feedback on what the, how those changes would impact um their work. So just wanted to help the general public understand and follow the flow of conversation that's taking place here. Um, Ms. Welsh, I believe you have a memo.
Okay, Cindy, do you mind putting the memo up? Thank you. So I I'll just sort of take you through paragraph by paragraph. I did, the memo's broken up into the purchasing thresh- thresholds, which really focused on the recommendations that Dr. Moss had provided. And then the next one is equity transparency and accountability is the second half, sec- second half of it. And that's related to Board Member Walker's uh uh proposals. So I, um, so that first paragraph under purchasing threshold were the requests that came through in terms of maintaining the fifty thousand for a specific equipment, material, services, or supplies. Um, and that they um, our recommendation to move the threshold for instructional materials was at one million, uh, two million, and you want to make, keep it at one million. And then the other area is that um that you recommended was that the threshold for the board's approval for professional services be reduced from two hundred fifty thousand to a hundred fifty thousand. Those are the only three that were focused on. Your other recommendations at this point are not concerns, but these three did provi- pro- provide uh major concerns. So uh Cindy, if you can scroll up. Right there is perfect. Thank you. So Board Member Briggs, you had asked about the legislation, and actually in the twenty twenty-three legislative session, uh, House Bill five four three was passed. And that is the um, that bill actually moved the um threshold for competitive bids from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. And that was for um, the all the uh basically what's considered small dollar uh procurements related to specific equipment, materials, services, or supplies. Um, and the reason behind the increase really was be to based on cost, cost studies that indicated that prices have risen. And that um, that if we don't raise the threshold and move along to the one hundred thousand, the risk is that the prices um that that we're ending up with more procurements that will be considered small dollar procurements, and that's gonna then require time and effort to complete the solicitation process. Um, and then the board oversight, which will will definitely encumber the deliberate process and drain time and energy away from the work itself in favor of additionally ancillary work associated with obtaining approval from the board. So it's really, the biggest thing i- is here is just the concern about the addition, the the um the work that's involved in when you do have to do an RFP or an IFB. And the time that's involved even to pr- pr- put everything together to provide it to the board when uh they're requesting approval. Um, and the fact that is the the purchasing department is fairly overloaded at this point in time. So this, that's just the one hundred thousand would have provided some relief in that arena. Uh, the next area that wa- was a concern, we had requested two million and the proposal uh was to keep it at uh one million. Um, and um that was a concern also because it reflects that that one, one million dollar increase that we asked for really reflects the cost of increased cost of instructional materials due due to economic changes. And then the last one has to do with the recommendation to reduce professional services from two hundred fifty to a hundred fifty thousand. And we have had two hundred fifty thousand for since twenty twenty-two. Um, and so it's these, the concerns in this arena, uh, the, uh, one of the majories has to do with the Office of General Counsel. And the services that they actually have to get from external counsel, a lot of different areas in the law. Uh, uh, specifically like civil rights, general liability, employment liability, immigration, construction, real estate, and transactions. And, you know, the law, just, and I can say this from my own experience, the law is like going to a doctor. You wouldn't go to a pediatrician if you think you have a neurological problem. You would go to the neurologist. It's the same idea with the law. You definitely need to go to the specialist, to the attorney who specializes in these different areas, depending on the the nature of the case. And then if you scroll down, uh, Cindy, to the next paragraph. And so the other concern is that um, given that the um, the Trump's administration's posture towards public education and novel positions on matters such as the Title uh Six and the patriotic education, transgender students, there's a high probability that um um, that PGCS will experience an increase in litigation. So that's, that is a concern where there will be a need for for um additional outside legal assistance. And the other thing is that caseflow and allegations do change from year to year. Um, but the the bigger concern also is the fact that it's it's quite easy to reach two hundred fifty thousand in legal costs for a particular um uh case. And the fact is, is that when a case comes in, general counsel wants to be able to assign the case to the, to whatever firm they think is appropriate to address it. And because there's so many um timelines when it relates to the law, uh, oftentimes, it's the the ability to be able to um do an RFP and and, you know, it get different firms and then also go through the approval process could really interfere with the timeline that's involved in on the, in the these cases, depending on the nature of the case. Um, and so, and if, and if it's a short timeline, depending on the case, then you wrote, it's like, they can't wait. You gotta move forward because, of course, they're expecting you to respond. Um, so a concern is that the RFPs would require um, uh, for the different areas, the law would be overburned, um, especially for new and existing firms wishing to do business with us because um it's really would require them to submit a separate bid for each area of the law that their firm covers. And it could interve- inter- inadvertently dissuade some of the smaller minority of women-owned, Princeton County-based firms from beginning or continued business with PGCS. Um, the other thing is extended approval process could deter these firms who are not even want to want to be able to um work with us, uh, mainly because they lack, they lack the financial flexibility to endure lengthy procurement uh cycles. Um, and then if you scroll down further, since uh this last thing related to the uh thresholds. Uh, the other thing, it goes sort of to your question again, Board Member Briggs, in terms of just uh, when you think about workload or the impact of uh, when it, you have to do RFPs and IFBs, uh, generally, it takes about two hundred, hu- two hundred to three hundred sixty-five days to issue and award an RFP and a hundred to a hundred fifty days to award an IFB. So um, the process is very time consuming. And then, of course, board approval on top of that would eat up more time. So it's it's a function of both work and time that I think is the concern about the um, about the thresholds. As far as the equity and and transparency and accountability piece that Board Member Walker had um, had proposed. Um, she, uh, the proposal was to adopt the verifiable goal that a minimum of six percent of the total annual value of all purchases of goods and services be awarded to underrepresented business. And then the def- definition would be not, uh, be that it doesn't, it's not limited to just certified businesses that are women-owned, minority-owned, disabled-owned, veteran-owned, LGBT-plus-owned, and nonprofit work centers for blind and severely disabled. The percentage which shall be reviewed periodically based on in- uh industry trends and community, community. So in looking at the, um, if you can scroll up a little bit further, Cindy. Cindy, can you scroll up just a tad, please? Thank you. Uh, Drake, just take it down one second. Just down to the top of that paragraph, please. Do you hear me? Do you, can you, do you know what I'm talking about? Can you just scroll down, just? The other way, I'm sorry, up. I I'm not, I don't know what I'm talking, right there, okay? No, keep going down. Uh, up, I mean, up. I mean, I want you to, I want you to scroll up so I can go, keep going down, okay? Get the page. Go past that and get to the um tr- equity transparency and accountability. I want to look at the second paragraph. There you go, right there. You're going too fast. Okay, uh, anyway, so the re- the the, and and this is all based on basically legal research, looking at MBE, MBE uh requirements and everything. And also education article, um, section five dash one one two, uh, which requires formal bidding requirements for the small purchase items which are at the, now at a hundred thousand um, uh, dollars. So to try to maintain a variable goal of the minimum of six percent, um, the concern would be that you're basically doing a set aside from the formal business, from the formal bidding uh requirements of Education five one one two. And then that could end up resulting in a non-compliance with the law, what would result in law compliance. Because if we're required to formally bid, then, of course, we, that bidding process, we open up to anyone that's a minority business. But we can't guarantee that the, that there's gonna be a minimum of six percent of total annual value of all purchases or goods and services uh will occur because in essence, then you are setting aside the bidding process. Um, that, and so, um, you still have to do the bidding process first. But of course, you can do the, all the other things that Board Walker, Board Member Walker and had talked about in terms of ensuring that we can get uh, as many people that are, you know, underrepresented or in this instance, minority businesses that, um, you know, in terms of training them, providing sessions about how do you go about the process to even, you know, complete a bid, all those types. all those types of things to encourage that increase there. The other thing that is a concern, and this is, you know, talking to both Office of General Counsel as well as to both our minority business enterprise liaison person that we have and to our Associate Superintendent in Operations. The concern is that, that it would be very difficult to actually certify a person that, unrepresented business such as LGBTQ, or even nonprofit work centers without taking them through some type of certification process. And if we were attempting to go, go beyond what the certification process would then be. For example, with LGBTQ plus, merely just even questioning someone and saying, what can you provide proof or whatever, could actually throw us into some type of discrimination suit. So that would, that would definitely be a concern. And so the recommendation is that we actually stay with MBE, the minority business enterprise requirements. And part of that is because if you look at the definition in COMAR related to minority businesses, which Board Member Walker does refer to, the, they define it as economically disadvantaged individual as, and they also, as a socially disadvantaged individuals who the ability to compete in the free enterprise system has been impaired due to diminished capital and credit opportunities as compared to others in the same and similar line of business who are not socially disadvantaged. And anyone that is, their, their net worth exceeds one million, five hundred thousand, what automatically, they would not be included in that group. So, and COMAR also defines socially disadvantaged individuals as an individual who has been subjected to racial or ethnic prejudice or cultural bias with American society because of membership in a group without regard to individual qualities. Which in that certification process, when you're thinking about a business that might be fifty-one percent owned and controlled by one or more individuals who might be LGBTQ plus. I think if they went through the certification process, the possibility is that they would definitely be qualified as MBE. When you look at the definition in terms of cultural bias in American society, because we're not, because in essence, the whole idea of the certification process to ensure that organizations like ourselves do not just look at individual qual- we don't look at the membership, like, oh, you're a part of this group, whatever the group might be. But instead, we're looking at the individual qualities of the individual to own the business and want to contract with us. So it is the recommendation of the administration that, in order to be in compliance with state law, that the regulation and regulations that the, all of the minority business enterprise requirements are, are met and that we work to do that. And that, but that we, it is the intent that the, that in doing so, we believe the intent of the committee would be addressed. But the administration also is definitely in agreement with the committee's recommendation for the superintendent to ensure good faith efforts are made to increase access to procurement opportunities for MBE. And also reporting on a quarterly basis, the percentage of contract awards to MBE businesses. So that, that's basically it in nutshell for the, from the superintendent's memo.
Thank you so much, Ms. Welsh, for the superintendent's memo. I'm gonna see if committee members have any questions or comments at this time as it relates to this item. Is that Chair Jackson has his hand up? Chair Jackson?
Yes, thank you so much. You caught me right in the middle. Oh, good. But, uh, real quick, I did have a question about the instructional material piece. I know that, that a comment was made about economic factors, you know, tariffs, et cetera, increasing the overall cost of, you know, instructional material in general. My question is, is that, how did you guys forecast the delta exactly? Like, so we know that the material costs would go up, but by how much? And, and how did we calculate that delta? I mean, like, what forecasting methods or like, how did you calculate that? And then also, did you look around in the industry in general? And to see, you know, what are they actually doing to compensate for that expected increase in instructional material costs? So I just wanted to know if there was any analysis done around that. Thanks.
And I would have to defer that question to Director Johnson.
Okay, and so, yes, we did do some analysis of the, you know, the data that we had prepared for FY twenty-four. We looked at, you know, the request that we had, the volume of requests that we had, and that we actually do market research, you know, on a case-by-case basis. So, so yes, we, we did take in consideration of that when we actually asked for the threshold to be upgraded to that two million dollar threshold.
Would you, would you care to share any of that, that market analysis with us so we can better see the justification of the increase?
I can share that information with you when I come back, if you don't mind. Because the, the supervisor that works on that particular section for that is not here. And she just definitely has all of the data and, and everything for that particular, for those particular contracts. Because there is a lot of contracts, there is a lot of data, there are a lot of avenues in which she actually did look at. So she does go out, do market research with all of the, you know, LEAs that are in the area. And I definitely don't want to misspeak about all of the hard work that she put into that, to come up with that, that dollar amount increase.
Thank you.
I think, I don't see any other hands come, I want to, do want to just, you know, flag for my time, Cindy, this is my time. You know, I, I made these recommendations to change this policy and these thresholds, and I do want to be clear about it. You know, even a, a quick market analysis, just in Montgomery County, our policy is actually very generous. In Montgomery County, that threshold is set at fifty thousand for everything. The Prince George's County Public Schools Board Policy has exceptions so that folks aren't actually having to come back to the board as frequently as they do in the Montgomery County world. I do think that, for me, workload and all of those things are factors that matter for me in this work. But I think we have a fiduciary responsibility as a board to ensure we're making good use of taxpayer dollars. And I hate to bring this up, thanks to board actually failed this contract. But we just had a contract brought to the school board for six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars last Thursday, where there was no RFP posted online, it was not competitively procured. It was an item that the administration wanted. And so I think we've got to be good stewards of dollars. And part of that is ensuring that this board sees contracts, especially in that magnitude of six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. But again, you know, my recommendation was not a million, not two million dollars, but a million. That's, you know, somebody who works in education, that's a lot of spending authority for a school district, particularly around instructional materials, to move us down. Or I just want to name that, that, that's for consultants to come in and do professional development. Right now, it's at two hundred and fifty. Part of the reason I asked the administration was to, to bring us back some data to say, how many vendors are actually coming in and right at that threshold or right away from it across those exceptions? So while I appreciate, you know, the superintendent's memo, I do favor the, the notion around minority businesses and understand some of the concerns there. But, you know, in good faith, you know, I've, I've got to exercise our fiduciary responsibility. And given a blank checkbook with taxpayer dollars at a time where, you know, we're trying to make sure every dollar and cent counts, I do think it's this board's responsibility to closely manage our financial resources. And that begins with contracting. So, and I'm telling you, I'm most worried, given what just happened this past week with a six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar contract that we've yet to see an RFP for. So I'm hypersensitive to, to some of these things in this moment. But I'll, I'll end my time there. Chair, Vice Chair Briggs, I see your hand is up, and then Board Member Walker.
Thank you, Committee Chair Moss. So Ms. Johnson and Mrs. Welsh, like, I just want to say, one, I want to thank you again for the presentation. I don't, I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate that you'll have answers right now, but just want to clarify that for the market analysis piece. And I think for also the public's sake, like, it may seem obvious, but it might not also seem obvious, like inflation, right? If the dollar has buying power for a dollar this year, next year it may be ninety cents or maybe less than that. So it makes sense to me. I guess my question is like, is, what are some of the best practices around rounding up? So if you are saying it's, you know, last year it was a million dollars, is now like nine hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Is it best practice that you round up to the nearest hundred thousand? Or is it like, let's just go to a whole number and do that? And I would love to just know, like, if you could, if you have any market information on that? Because that may also justify the two million versus like, you know, one million, one hundred and fifty thousand, as we get the numbers back. And then I also just would love to know, like I said, I already mentioned this to you, Director Johnson, but like, my, I guess my big concern is just us being a bottleneck to you all being able to do the work. And, and I know that part of what I'm hearing from my colleagues is like, process matters. So the process is, I think the big picture is like what the school system is tasked with doing, which is like, we're serving our students, we're serving our schools. And so that's the, that's the mission, that's the vision. And we're doing it fairly and equitably. And, and I think that this is a part of that process. And so I just want to make sure that we have, you know, those things in place too, where it's like, if we're thinking about how your office sequences through these things, if you could just clarify that for us, so that we can have that inside, because we may be seeing it as a board member. But I think also it would be good to kind of see it, and you've clarified it somewhat in the memo. But what I mean is like, how does this impact you? You know, what does this look like in the day-to-day? And that would be helpful for me to know at least. And, and it might just be me having a call with you. So I don't want to put like any extra work on your plate. But that's something that I'm thinking about, is like, it'll just help me. Yeah, my big concern is just us being a bottleneck to you all being able to get the work done. And, you know, having kind of an extra layer of, of responsibility that the board has to do. And then I think the question is, Ms. Welsh, I would also just like to add in here, like, what are some best practices there? Because do boards really have the capacity to look at, you know, five hundred different contracts? Or is that something that happens if we're looking at each, you know, the rationale behind those things? So if there's any additional information, I think the memo was helpful, but just want to add that additional context. Thank you so much.
Board Member Walker?
Yes, thank you. I just had two quick things. I think, you know, this just brings up the point, even for us as board members, to really challenge ourselves even when it comes to amendments for our own ROI and our requests and our rationale. It just really challenges the notion of how much money are we asking for, what's the rationale? So that's one. The second piece that I did want to tell Ms. Welsh about, thank you for this. And I do understand what you were saying about my request for the six percent. And I do understand how that can put us at a gap. So thank you so much for resourcing that. Not a gap, but I hate to say liability, but a kind of watch out, I will say, for what it means to our underserved population. And so I take that. And for that piece, in that small piece right there, I would say that we should shift that language a little bit. From what I had, I know I gave you like a whole synopsis of things to add to this. But for that piece right there, I do think Chair Moss, that it is worth going back and taking a look at that section for the six percent that I recommended, so that we don't find ourselves at a disadvantage by way of the six percent that I was asking, that they make sure that we have for underrepresented population. And we can go in there and be really mindful of what the impacts are. Makes sense?
Absolutely.
All right, thanks.
Any other colleagues have questions or comments or feedback? Ms. Welsh, based on that, I think I don't have any additional changes from what we've already laid out. I do support Chair, Vice, I do support Board Member Walker's acceptance of the administration's, you know, recommendations here. So, but yeah.
May I ask a few questions?
Absolutely. Well, you're right.
So, Board Member Walker, though, when you say about the six percent, what is your thoughts, though, on doing away with under, on, excuse me a minute?
Underrepresented population.
The underrepresented language and just going with all the MBE requirements. And I, I actually think, and depending on the MBE, there are some, some percentage requirements that are actually, depending on what's being procured, a higher percentage than actually the six percent. But it's specific to whatever the item is for procurement. But and also, though, keep within the policy, all the things that you added related to really training people, you know, at minority business on, you know, how to procure, you know, all those kinds. You had like four, I think it was four items there or something.
Yeah, four categories.
Yeah, so like, we incorporate. And I already had made a change in the policy because we had the conversation about ensuring that the reporting, so that when they do the quarterly report of the contracts, they would also then provide the board for all contracts a report on how many of those, how many of those contracts are minority business contracts? There was like several things you wanted reported. So I put all that language in, and the superintendent is totally, you know, fine with that, that that's, that we want to report that information to. Because it sort of also helps us be more accountable when we're reporting that information on a, on a quarterly basis.
Yeah, no, thank you for that question. I do have a response to you and some thoughts for the Chair, Chair Moss. But maybe Chair Moss, do you want to go over to Ms. Johnson, just to, before, because maybe she has input to what I'm about to say?
Absolutely. Do you, Chair, Director Johnson, do you want to give some feedback here before Board Member Walker responds?
Uh, yes, and so just wanted to share, I know that this board is a little new, just like me. But that we do provide a substantial report on our MBE reporting. And so that report, actually, we're finalizing it now because it covers a fiscal year from July to December. We get it biannually. And that it does break down all of the MBE dollars that were spent on a monthly basis. It breaks down the CBBS, the CNBEs, the women-owned businesses, the African-American Hispanic businesses. So it breaks all of those down in the contract awards per month. And that, that report will be finalized, but it does not address, you know, any of the underutilized business, underrepresented businesses, I'm sorry. And then it also, so it doesn't address that, but that should be finalized pretty soon so that you all can see it. And we're right on track with how it, the cycle goes with it being sent on an annually basis.
Thank you so much, Director Johnson. Board Member Walker?
Yeah, absolutely. That sounds amazing. That means that what we're requesting as a committee should be easy to put into you all's overall reporting and the superintendent seems to be aligned. So I think that's right on par. I think at the end of the day, what we're requesting overall, as we talked last time, is really to ensure that we had our underrepresented population intertwined into the overall policy in that it was evident of it, that we were making sure that we catered, not only catered, let me not say that, that we made sure that we reported on and had access to the diversity that's within our population. So that's the first. So Ms. Welsh, to answer your question, you know, I love the language outside of what you brought to my attention today, which I hadn't really thought about, about the ramifications of the six percent and it taking us outside of maybe some aspects that I hadn't really thought about first. So with all the other language, the same, for this one, I don't know the right percentage. I would take it from you all, but I would definitely say in alignment with what MBEs are with the county. Like, let's just take the county alignment and let's just move forward with that. We don't need any different calculations or anything like that. I think the county's directive is just fine, as long as we're clearly outlined. Because most important to me was really, in, in the committee as we talk, was really outlining what is the definition of underserved populations? And then how do we ensure that they had a stake at the, at the table and were represented inside of Prince George's County? And I think we hit on all of that with training, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
I want to make sure we, so if there are any, if there are no more comments from committee members, we're gonna move on to our next item. Thank you, Ms. Welsh, for coming in, and three, three, two, three. I think you have what additional changes the committee would like to make. So we're gonna move on now to.
But Chair Moss, I'm sorry, can I ask you, were you in alignment with that about the six percent? Because I know we talked about, are you aligned with what I just said?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I accept your feedback. When she gave the, the legal part, I stand the same language that you have here. I support it for sure. I don't know any other way to fix it, Board Member Walker, so I just have to accept it. I appreciate both of you for working on that. But let's go to Board Policy fifty-one, twenty-two, interscholastic and extracurricular activities. We've got Dr. Marrow in the house tonight. We've got Ms. Shirley Diggs in the house with us tonight. So Ms. Welsh, I want to give you an opportunity, and Director Johnson, oh, she's gone, I was gonna.
Okay, that's, that's what I was gonna say. And is it okay for Director Johnson to leave? So.
Yeah, I was gonna tell her that, my apologies. But if you want to go ahead and introduce your audience for fifty-one, twenty-two interscholastic and extracurricular activities. And one, I just want to, you know, thank this office for, for coming tonight and laying out some concerns that a couple, a couple of us had around, you know, athletics. I think they're gonna give us an overview of their process and the way that they do business. So, Ms. Welsh?
So we are fortunate to have the athletics. So we are uh fortunate to have the um athletics department here, which uh is.
Can I cut you off for a second?
Go, please, go ahead.
I see Board Member Boozer Struthers here. Did you have any questions about thirty-three, twenty-three? Board Member Boozer Struthers, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to leave you out.
My, my apologies for being late. Uh, no, I did not. I'm good to move on. Thank you.
I appreciate you. Um, all right, Ms. Welsh, uh fifty-one, twenty-two.
So um, the um guests that we have this evening are, are Carletta Morrow, Dr. Carletta Morrow. Who's our Associate Superintendent of High Schools and Non-Tрадitional Programs. And then um Marcy Holland, who's the Director of Secondary Programs. And then uh Shirley Diggs, who is the Coordinating Supervisor of Interscholastic Athletics. I believe those are the three people that are in attendance this evening that will be providing their presentation. Yes.
Good evening, everyone. So um, thank you for inviting us out. Um, I am Dr. Merrill, as she mentioned. But I'm gonna turn it over to uh Shirley Diggs, the um Coordinating Supervisor of Athletics, to start us off. And we'll bounce off of each other. Thank you.
Dr. Merrill, I apologize. I call you Morrow every time. So, Dr. Merrill, I apologize, just so everybody knows.
Same thing.
I do it all the time. I apologize.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting our Area Three team to the Policy and Governance Committee. So, based on your request, I will be reviewing Board Policy fifty-one, twenty-two, AP Procedure fifty-one, ten point three. Including AP fifty-one, ten point four, since they all have to deal with the athletics. Um, please note that we also follow school system policies, which is not different for athletics. This helps us to make any of our decisions for participation to the students. Okay? Board Policy fifty-one on the slide two.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the question, do you all have the presentation? Okay.
We got it a week ago. It should be up now.
Slide two, um, Board Policy fifty-one, twenty-two, main information as we move forward in the presentation. This policy reminds us that student participation in athletics is not only a privilege but an honor. This requires maintaining the academic standing and high standard of conduct. The policy defines graduation cohort as referred to by the expected graduation year. And the graduation cohort year as the group of students who begin as a first-time ninth grader in a particular school year. So, moving to slide three, I've connected the Administrative Procedure fifty-one, ten point three and fifty-one, ten point five, four. Because they are similar. So the statement refers to, for fifty-one, ten point three refers to student transfers. PG CPS students are required to attend the identified residential boundary school of his or her parents or legal guardian. The students transferred to another school may only be authorized by the Office of Student Records and Transfers and Archival Services. Fifty-one, ten point four refers to the athletic transfers of out-of-county and in-county student athletes. The Board of Education expects that each student will attend the identified residential boundary school. In which their parents or legal guardians reside. This board recognized that there are circumstances when consideration may be given for a student to attend a school. Other than their identified residential boundary school. On slide four, we talk about the background information for fifty-one, ten point three, which was similar. To the um statement, but for fifty-one, ten point four, also uses the term legally transferred. To another school may participate in athletics. We also refer to AP fifty-one, eleven for collecting acceptable residence verification when we do the transfers. On slide five, the next slide covers some important definitions within our different APs. And I'd like to point out a few that relate to athletic transfers. Boundary school, the school assigned to the principal, address of the parent or legal guardian. Guardianship, a legal appointment granting an adult the legal responsibility for the care and management of a child. Residency fraud, failure to, failure to provide valid proof of residency. And failure to inform the school of any change in residency. Households found to have committed residency fraud are ineligible for transfers until the following school year. Transfers, a request for special transfer to attend a school other than the inbounder school. Based on the residence of the student's parent or court-appointed guardian. Student transfers granted according to Section Eight of this administrative procedure expires at the end of the current school year. So they have to renew every year. Students will be required to attend the residency boundary school for the next year. And the last part of that is the Athletic Transfer Packet, which comes from our office, requires the PG CPS Athletic Transfer Screening Form. To be completed for all transfers, includes all students new to a team. Requires the principal and AD signatures from the previous school and from the school that they're transferring into. On slide six, the Athletic Office is governed by the Maryland Public Secondary Schools Athletic Association. Pertaining to transfers and student eligibility, MPSAA has regulations and policies that must be followed. By all public schools in Maryland. As you can see on this slide, local school systems may adopt rules. Governing their athletic programs that are more restrictive than MPSAA rules. Less restrictive may not be adopted. So all districts have different GPA requirements. And residency pro- policies. What means, remains the same is that students nineteen or older as of August thirty-first. Are ineligible and students may participate for a maximum of four seasons in any one sport. Why is all of this necessary and reasons for some of our changes to transfers and eligibility? Transfers and eligibility has become a growing concern across the state. PG CPS created our rules and regulations to ensure compliance that these are followed. Number one, transfer students include, including private school students, were entering PG CPS with illegal addresses. Students transferring for the sole purpose of athletics from school to school. Another big concern is parents owning a home, but using shared housing slash leased documents. Without proper verification. And this, the shared housing. Um, that must be updated every year with the proper verification of bills for that year. And that's where we seem to find some problems. We are not having equity and fair play for our student athletes at the right school. But we receive um hotline calls, emails, letters, and even school self-reporting of violations. They come at any time, in any form. We also may hear from the state or another district concerning an athletic. Athlete or an athletic team in our county. Potential violations are reviewed and investigated. If a penalty is given, it is in alignment with MPSAA and in alignment with our local school system. Policies and procedures. Slide eight. When we enforced the fifth-year student ineligibility, many wanted to know what other districts are doing this. Slide eight shows the counties in bold that follow the same rule. Please note, this is new and it's in alignment with all of our policies. NCAA has changed their regulation. They do not accept any courses after the fourth year, starting from the cohort ninth grade year. So that was new last year. Slides nine, ten, and eleven just talks about some of our um reasons uh for the eligibility change. You will see several reasons that relate to AP fifty-one, twenty-two and stated in AP fifty-one, ten point four. So after COVID, students started reclassifying, so they could attend another school year. As we moved away from COVID, students are still trying to reclassify, but starting at an earlier grade level. They're trying it even in the tenth grade. Students started failing on purpose, so they could repeat the grade level, not to mention. This started to have an impact on our four-year graduation rate. Private school students moving into our schools to become a fifth-year student, with some of them already playing four years at their private school. Students started the emancipation process, that was new this year, in order to attend schools for sports. But not legally emancipated through the court system. Lastly, National Federation of High School Sports State, that eight semester rule for high schools exist in all states. Promotes timely progress towards graduation by discouraging students from delaying their high school education. And participation again is a privilege granted to students during their four years in high school. The last slide is very important pertaining to the steps of our implementation and compliance process of transfer students. Number one, students new to the team or transfer students must report to their athletic director. Again, that's students that are new to the team or transfer students. The transfer packet must be signed by the previous school AD and principal. And then signed by the school principal and AD from the school transferring into. The ADs must submit the mandatory packet to the Office of Athletics, Interscholastic Athletic. All required documents must be submitted for review, approval, or denial. This includes transcripts, residency that is up to date, special programs slash transfers. And legal guardianship. This should all be um submitted to us by the ADs. Our office has ten business days after receiving all documents to make the decision of participation. And we will notify the principal and the AD in writing. And based on our decision, which could be a hearing, they can come to us for a hearing. Parents are able to move forward with ten business days to the Superintendent Office of Appeals. So this concludes our presentation. Thank you for your time. And any questions? No, you don't have any.
You did do a good job. You did lay it out. Any uh committee members have any questions? Board Member Brown, I do see your hand up. I'm gonna defer to our colleagues on the committee first and then I'll get straight to you. Um, any uh Board Member Walker?
I, I don't know if I understood this correctly. I just want to make sure I heard this right. Did you say that? People, that there are scholars who intentionally. Fell a grade so that they can be reclassified so that NCAA can see them the next year. Did I see that right? Okay, okay.
You were right.
Yes, it, it goes back as far as middle school um for some athletes, yes. That is a trend.
Okay, and, and, okay, and I'll, I'll, I'll reserve right to come back. Thank you.
Board Member Brown, Board Member Walker's a little disheveled. So I go to Board Member Brown and then we'll come back.
Oh, Board Member Walker, you have so much to learn about this wonderful world of sports. Um, thank you so much. Uh, to all you all for presenting, um, Ms. Diggs, thank you so much. Um, I actually did have a question. So I am a PG CPS mom with scholars in sports. Um, and that was definitely one of the questions that uh my kids asked me. Can I, can you hold me back? Um, and so that I can be reclassified. That's like the term um that is used. And so, obviously, I said absolutely not. Uh, however, I think uh for some reason, there is some sort of incentive that goes with it. I also believe, and I wasn't very clear on, I guess, how we're gonna regulate this. Because I don't want to say it's only the coaches, or it's only the parents, or it's only the ADs. It seems like this is a um, a, a well-known practice that is accepted um in a lot of schools. And I kind of am curious how we plan on regulating this moving forward. Because it is discouraging um for some scholars that do want to have that opportunity um to be competitive. But then, you know, i- it seems to be a little political on, once it gets to that realm. So can you guys kind of um discuss on just some best practices on what we're gonna do moving forward to try to regulate that? Uh, and make sure that people are in compliance?
So Board Member Brown, one of the things we tried to do was implement that transfer policy. Um, I believe that's new as of last school year. And so we found that, you know, trying to find a way to actually track. New athletes coming into the school building outside of the cohort. And now we actually keep up with the cohort year. And so that cohort year definition is the four years of high school, beginning with your ninth grade year. And so even if you're in a private school, you have a state number now. And so your cohort year stays with you. And so if in fact you reclassify, then it shows up um often, and then sometimes it doesn't. And so that's why we created that transfer process, so that any student new to your team should submit that paperwork. So then we're able to get documentation from the previous coaches and previous school that says you entered school with this cohort. You actually only have one year of eligibility or two years of eligibility remaining that matches the cohort that makes you eligible. Because we were running into individuals coming into our school system outside of the cohort, playing that fifth year, some sixth year. You know, so we had to come up with a policy so that all programs could be equitable and fair.
And I think too, and I'm so sorry, Board Member Moss, or Chair Moss. I think it's a, it's a safety issue as well that we have to consider. And so that was the only thing that I wanted to address. Thank you so much.
I've got a couple of questions, but I want to go back to Board Member Walker um and see if she's ready now, or I can come back to you if you want me to.
Yeah, you know, I, this is new to me. I do have a scholar in PG CPS in middle school. He is not in sports, so that's why I think I'm missing this world. So I do appreciate Board Member Brown just letting me know. I just need to do a little more research. You know, the piece that I had is, and again, I'm not a sports mom, but I think about. Priorities and what's important. And obviously, a mom, I'm trying to put myself in a situation, feels like this sport is a priority for them at this time. So I'm just wondering if it's even possible, and you don't have to answer me now, I'm just thinking out loud, is for us to really track. When a scholar, specifically an athlete, is doing really well in a class and then they plummet down. And maybe we can track that, because that then gives us a lens or red light or something that flags to really say, hey. Let me go look at this and really talk to the teacher and recognize, hey, they were getting all A's and all of a sudden they're failing at a D. And what I know as a parent is that we don't always track that. We don't always call parents when something is, is, is a little off. We kind of miss, and I'm not saying it's all teachers, please don't get me wrong. I'm saying it's also parents too. But I wonder if specifically around sports, since we know that this is a gap that we might be looking to solve, what can we do in order to make sure that we catch that? Um, and, and do something about it from the school level. So I'm just asking you all to consider that as an example. Thanks.
Yeah, and so one thing, um, Board Member Walker, of course, the GPA requirement is there as well. But depending on when your sports season, if it's fourth quarter, you need that for the fall sports. And so, you know, so what we often find is when your fall sport is over, you drop, you know, or, and you may continue to drop. Or you just drop and then you come back around when your sport starts again, you know. So we have a lot of different ways that we see our athletes, and then we'll see them just not come back to school. Because they'll withdraw and show back up the next year because they want to reclassify or continue to play. You know, so it's, it's different things that we've seen. Um, in many cases, homeschooling, you know, um, go to a different county, go to a private school. Sometimes they go to some of the non-accredited schools, you know, different ways that we, that have come through the office that we're like, oh, wow, you know. Um, so there, there have been a lot of different cases that we've been able to explore. And, and even with the transfers. You know, we've had parents that say, I'm transferring for sports or athlete, and we're like, no, you know, we, we're not gonna transfer you for af- for sports. And then sometimes they get through somehow, you know. And so those are the cases that we're like, we can't transfer anybody based on sports, you know.
Yeah, I, I've got just a couple of questions here. Um, and mine really goes back to. I, I, I will say, part of the reason why I wanted you all to come is because I was really disheveled at the fact that a student athlete in the middle of playoffs. Had to be kicked off the team and, and wasn't able to play. And so, can you all talk to me around the, like, how, how, how we get to that place where we have to remove a kid who's in the middle of a season, right? Um, and then I want to talk about the shared housing form and if there's space in it for dual guardianship, right? Like, the way it currently reads is I don't see an opportunity around it. Um, if, if parents are divorced in some way. So if you all could walk me through. So if you all could walk me through, like, you're in the middle of a season, and you, your parents have made a decision to move you, and now your entire senior year is disrupted, like, why do, why did we suffer? Me, I guess the question is, if all of that is true, why do we have to remove the student? And what policy is actually forcing us to do that? So say all that is true, and that it did happen, the kid's not supposed to be there. What's really driving that? That, that would be helpful for me to hear, and I think the public, right? People consistently say, why does this always happen at playoff? And it, why, why does it seem like a kid is most impacted by this? So Dr. Merrill, can you share a little bit about how we got there and how this works?
So in, in many cases, most of the cases that we received are cases that are reported to our office, the superintendent or the state. And when we receive them, whether it's the first day of the season, the last day of the season, we have to investigate it. That's the first thing. And so once we investigate, oftentimes, information that was submitted to our office or even the school was not accurately, was not the accurate information. And so in many cases, parents, so what our administrative procedure says is you can only have one primary residence, and that is the administrative procedure from the school system, not just athletics. We align with the administrative procedure for the school system. So even if you have multiple properties across the county, your primary residence is where you reside. And so if you're renting properties and things of that nature, you can't be that real estate agent and have students all throughout the county. So oftentimes, you may, there's a place in synergy for if in fact you don't live in the same household, if you are, you know, two parents and so forth. And so you do have the opportunity if in fact you're divorced, if you are separated, and so forth. And then we have form with administrative procedure to support that. And so that, that's part of it. I know that time is up, so.
Oh, you're good. You can finish.
Okay, okay. And so that, that's some of what we receive, and oftentimes, you know, for whatever reason, it's become the trend for individuals to report at the end of the season instead of the beginning, you know? So, you know, when we look at our data, we've had four cases, I would say, four to five cases in the last, since twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three. And each one has been later in the season. And so when it's reported to us, unfortunately, we have to research. And it's, it's been in soccer, it's been in football twice, and in basketball, you know? And so, you know, we want our teams to win. We know we have great athletes in Prince George's County, but we, we have to follow policy and procedure to ensure that you're playing at the, the right school, that, you know, you're playing with the right team, that you meet all the criteria, you know, and so forth and so on. And so unfortunately, then we have to give penalty in line with M P S S A and the school system. And so, and everything is spelt out in, in, in a, you know, as well as the appeal process for all parents, if in fact there's an issue, you know, we have a hearing that the next step goes to the appeals office, so forth and so on. So all of that is spelled out.
Um, I, I'll have a second round. I think I'm out of time. I wanna go to Board Member Boozer Struthers, whose hand is up.
All right, thank you so much, and thank you all for being here and for this great presentation. I wanted to ask, there's, I think, Director Diggs, you had said this during the presentation when you got to the shared housing piece. You said that it needed to be validated each year, and I wanted to clarify if that's only athletics or if that's every shared housing case of any student?
That's every shared housing case. So at the top of the form, we just went through this with the different committees of places. At the top, it says that it must be renewed every year, and that's not just for athletics.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate that clarification, because I, I could probably say with some certainty there's probably inconsistency in the system on that. So if it should be looked at every year, that's something that, that I, I certainly am, you know, as a board member, want to know more data on, so thanks for raising that. The other piece that I'm interested in is the, the great new thing that you just did in creating the Student Advisory Board for athletics that I saw announced on social media. I think I actually wrote in on this that, that what I'm really interested in is the helping students stay on these teams and making sure they have the support they needed for the two-point-oh and above. We had very sad stories in baseball, high school, uh, boys' baseball this season because of grade point averages, and it just, you know, put me on alert as a board member and parent, you know, that, you know, to understand if all high schools are providing the same level of support, are, are all teams receiving similar support. And I know that as a board, we talked about all extracurricular activities policies, and it, it didn't wanna say that athletes should get more academic support than a student who needs to maintain a, to the G P A for any other type of activity, but I did see that up close this year, and, and I'm very much looking forward to the, the Student Advisory panel's inputs on that particular issue.
So every school has two academic coaches for athletics. So every school should be utilizing them, and I know we did in our schools of study hall and running those after school. And so especially on the off-season, because just like Dr. Merrill said, that's when the kids just fall short. They just fall off. And so we will definitely look more into that, and believe it or not, I'm glad you brought up the Student Advisory, because one of the big things on our gallery walk they wrote is keeping their athletes on the team, because they're feeling it when it happens. So thank you for that, and yes, we'll look into it more.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Board Member Boozer Struthers. Any colleagues with first-round questions, and we can go to second round with Board Member Walker? Board Member Walker?
Thank you. Just really quickly, as I, I'm gonna be really looking into this. This is blowing my mind. Thank you for introducing me into this new world of sports. You know, shared housing, I've been there, and I, I had to do it every year, actually. So I, I appreciate Board Member Boozer Struthers saying inconsistency. Mine was consistent, but I can imagine that it differs across, so thank you for bringing it up. I am a divorced parent also, who has joint custody, and both live in Prince George's County. And with that, again, I'm not a sports parent, but I'm just wondering, you know, custody battles happen offline all the time consistently. And I'm just wondering, is there an opportunity to, I firmly believe, let me be clear, that you need to choose a boundary school. No matter if you have fifty-fifty custody or whatever your custody, every other week, whatever your custody arrangements are, you have to have a boundary school, which means you have to have a primary residence that you have for the school system, so we could be clear for a number of reasons, which I know you all know. I guess what I'm asking is, depending on what the custody debates are throughout the course of the year, if a child or scholar has to go live with the other parent, and that becomes their primary resident in the middle of the school year or anytime after they declare, you know, what happens to that? Wh- where do they put that in, where, and, and, and if they need to appeal, which I understand, so a determination is made, somebody calls a hotline, somebody finds out, and a determination is made, do they then, because I've been in an appeals meeting, but I'm wondering, do they then automatically get transferred to the new resident because of the, the status? And then the person has to fight the appeal while they're at the new school? Or do they stay in the current school until we can get clarity?
So Board Member Walker, it, most of this lies in the hands of people accounting. And so when parents go through situations throughout the school year, they can definitely apply for the transfers and so forth to remain at their school. And in many cases, even with athletes, because it's terminal, it's called terminal transfer. So even in many cases with athletes, we don't move them if we know we're gonna impact their instructional program in its late in the school year. But for the following year, we do expect them to go to the proper school and play on the proper team, you know? And so there are provisions in place within the administrative procedure where if in fact you have a hardship, if things happen throughout the school year, you would either request this remain or transfer. But what you can't have is two houses as your primary, you know? And, and what we find with sports, we've often find you have a child registered at one school and a child registered at a different boundary school, which often is a, a different, you know, lease or shared housing tool used.
Thank you for answering us. I, I've just got a follow-up here. You know, one of the, one of the concerns that I have here is our current board policy, which is this board has authority over board policy, not administrative procedures. And I do think there's an opportunity in our existing policy to add some language around shall. And, and, and what do I mean by shall? I mean, I think that we need to codify on policy that at the start of each of these athletic seasons, the school administration and staff shall have, you know, a residency meeting with parents or something like, to be able to go through this, to verify all of this is true, to have some review. It's just, I, we, we've just had this to happen too many times, and the students actually become the most impacted by this. And so I'm wondering if you all, as, as a team, see any opportunities for us to shore up either the board policy or for you all to shore up the administrative procedure for us to get better at this? Because I, I, I do think, I don't think Ms. Diggs wakes up to disqualify children, and I just wanna clarify that. I don't think Dr. Merrill wakes up, uh, none of you wake up to... But the reality is, is it's happened, and there are children who D-one opportunities are on the line. And, I mean, this, this means a lot for our kids. And so what opportunities do you all see to shore this up so that it doesn't happen again? Now, if it's happened four times, and I, I know you all can't get people to report earlier. I mean, it's not, you, you can't pick up the phone and be like, hey, you got something brewing over here, can you report it? But there, there has to be some procedures or policies that we, we can put in place to be able to get better at this so that it doesn't happen.
I'm sorry. But, but Board Member Moss, we actually, this year, again, started working closely with people accounting, because this actually lies in their shop, to actually look at the administrative procedure to see what we could do alone with them around shared housing. We talked about the form, we talked about just different things we can do to try to help parents to understand it. And then we've also talked about from the Office of Interscholastic Athletics, how we can do some parent workshops to help them understand just policies and procedures, because a lot of this lies in the school. And so what we don't want to do as the athletic office to be that first stop, you know, we review what's submitted to us, and what the schools have to rely on is what parents register for school. And so oftentimes, one of the things we've put in place with our athletic directors, now that they're full-time, is that you're gonna have to dig in the file. You know, you, you're gonna have to dig in more than just they filled out the form. You're gonna need to look at the backup and ensure that it's up to date and things like that. So we've gone back with our athletic directors, done some additional training, as well as our registrars, because there's definitely a gap in the consistency of implementing the policy. And so there is a report that you can pull shared housing, and there are some things that you're supposed to do every thirty days, you know, and so forth. So we're working with people accounting to actually address what we can do with our registrars and what systems and structures we can put in our schools, not just for the athletes, but for anyone who's on shared housing to ensure that our documents are accurate.
Thank you so much. I'd love for you all to bring those recommendations back to this committee for, for a board policy item. This particular board policy does have some under, under number four, under this, around academic eligibility, but we don't talk about residency in this.
Right.
I do think there's an opportunity in this board policy to shore that up, as well as the per pupil. But I believe Board Member Boozer Struthers' hand is up now, and so I wanna make sure I turn the floor over to Board Member Boozer Struthers.
Yeah, thank you so much. I, I have a couple of questions, but first, I wanted to ask about the Activate online signup program where documents can all be uploaded, and there's the check-off boxes, and I presume, I presume, like, there's a person on the other end who's looking at these very closely. I guess the athletic director at the, I'll, I'll just go with high school level. I don't know if it's being used at the middle school level. So is the Activate portal helping catch difficulties for students quicker? Because I know in my district, I have many, I, I don't know if it's many, but I have athletes who are unaccompanied minors, they're living with guardians, you know, their, their situations aren't that they have, you know, the, the parents in the household who are very active at school to help with all this. So I was wondering if the Activate system is helping them check everything?
So every athlete has to be on Activate, and so A Ds should be, if there's some kids that can't get on it and fill it up, A Ds should be pulling them in, helping them get on it, and then they would go back to their parents to have them sign the documents, but it's also in Spanish. So, you know, that whole Activate, however, Synergy is now asking that we are gonna upload in the parent per, uh, view, the whole packet, so that parents could fill that out at the beginning in the parent view. So that's where we're moving towards as we're moving forward.
Oh, that's interesting. So you're saying all of the, to, to become an athlete, to sign up for a team, you can see all that in parent view, you don't need...
Yeah, parent, right. That's what we're working on.
Oh, that's a great idea, to have multiple ways to get to it. Yeah. And the other, the other thing I would, I would say is that I, you know, you have a very comprehensive list of scenarios on these slides that, that I, I would say there's always going to be one we haven't thought of. And, and I know, you know, a school in my district was severely harmed by something no one ever thought probably was possible, and, and what happened, so.
Yes.
All adults, it, you know, the adults in the building and their teammates, teammates all bears, you know, some, you know, if you see something, say something, it could happen on these teams too, that we just, we have to raise the level of comfort of saying something as soon as something looks off. So, because we've learned, if there's a way, someone's gonna find the new way. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Colleagues, do you all have any more questions? I, I, I do wanna say, if there are no more questions, that we hope that you all will come back with recommendations for this policy. We don't wanna get ahead of you, but we do wanna make sure we are addressing some of these issues. So if, if you, I know you all are working with per pupil accounting to be able to think through how we can shore this up. There are some parent training pieces that we're talking about here. Lots of opportunities to tighten this up. And thank you all for bringing this information together, clarified for me a bit, but I do think we have a, a, an opportunity here to get better at this so that we can try to prevent and mitigate as much risk as possible. Board Member Boozer Struthers is right. There's no way for us to plan for every scenario when it comes to this work. But one of the things that, you know, somebody told me when I first moved here is like, there's a lot on the line when it comes to athletics for our kids who can't afford to get into private schools in the area who have some really good teams. And so there's a lot on the line, and we really have to take this seriously in terms of opportunity for the kids all across this county. And so I hope you all can come back with some recommendations for us to review around this board policy. I do think it's a little weak when it comes to eligibility, so that we can get stronger and hold people accountable. Dr. Merrill, do you wanna say anything just to wrap this up? Thank you for your leadership in getting straight on top of this when the committee requested you all to come and address some of these issues. I can't tell you how much I appreciate you putting together a presentation in forty-eight hours and saying, we're gonna get this right, Dr. Moss. So thank you for getting on top of it. But I do wanna spend some time for you to say any final remarks, and you too, Ms. Diggs, but I just wanted to make sure, Dr. Merrill was like, on it, in like five minutes. So, but do you have anything else you wanna say, Dr. Merrill?
Just wanna say thank you to my team. Just so you all will know, Dr., Ms. Hollis is the new director who all of the non-traditional schools and athletics falls under. And just, you know, within our athletic department, we have Ms. Diggs as the coordinating supervisor and Mr. McClure as the supervisor of athletics. And we recently, this school year, added a compliance officer, but districts outsides have about three or four compliance officers. So that's helped us to actually do some of this monitoring as well. When we have applications, you know, we have three, four hundred students ready in August to try out for teams, and so we have to go through all of those, you know? And so just wanna just thank them for the work that they're doing, because, you know, we only hear about the cases, but they're doing a, a, a Yoma's job of just ensuring that our athletes, you know, have what they need in our schools. So I just wanna thank the team for their work, and then we'll definitely come back. We'll deepen our team and add a student and a parent also to look at the policy, and, you know, some other A Ds and coaches, just so how can we tighten it up? Because that's what we, you know, in the business of, like, how do we get better? So I thank your support as well.
Yeah, no, and just for the general public, how this works, we brought them in tonight to learn a little bit more. We will be voting soon on our policies to actually revise next year, and this policy will be as part of that work. So this gives them time to work on it. Uh, and this policy will be as part of that work. So, um, this gives them time to work on it. So we won't take any actions on this policy tonight. This was the first step in that work. But this committee then will vote, um, I think next month on our, y'all correct me, committee, folks been here longer than me. We'll vote next month on our official work plan for next year, which will include this policy. And then this, they will be able to bring their recommendations back to us on this topic. So I do want to, you know, share with the general public how this process works in terms of policymaking and shaping. Okay? Well, y'all go home tonight. We'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Tomorrow. All right.
Um, colleagues, we just have just, we have a little bit more trudge through here. To, to get us through, everybody's good? Okay. Um, we have no legislative update tonight. You know, since you all did, I actually want to do something here. Colleagues, tell me if I'm wrong. We did approve Doc, uh, Board Member Walker adding Eric's Law to the agenda, which is really a legislative item. So instead of doing it under Policies for First Consideration, um, I think it fits best under the Legislative Update. Do y'all disagree? Board Member Walker, do you disagree that it's fitting for here? Am I violating any rules or policies, Ms. Welsh and Ms. Adelaide?
Well, because it wasn't on the agenda, um, prior to this meeting from the Open Meetings Act requirement, um, and that could possibly be considered a violation, but I would want to, um, refer over to your, um, Board Council to ensure. Certainly in terms of not making any decisions or voting, you definitely can't do that because it hasn't been on the agenda prior. Because you're supposed to advertise it on the agenda, but I would defer to your Board Council, uh, regarding the Opens Meeting Act.
Yeah, it's an update from, around legislation. We're not, I, I don't think we're asking to act on an item, but I do want to hear from the council. But the, I will say, we did approve and, and adding this to the agenda. Um, so, or, uh, or General Counsel?
Uh, yes, Captain Lou. I, I did hear that and, uh, I was a little hesitant, but, uh, yes, since it's not, all you're doing is providing an update, uh, and you're not voting on it, you should be able to discuss it this evening. And placing it under the legislative part is fine as well under this situation.
All right. I just didn't want, I didn't want to intentionally violate. I, I didn't want to violate any rules here. So Board Member Walker, you, you, you want to go ahead and talk about this a bit? I think it's really important. Um, so Board Member Walker.
Yes, absolutely. No, thank you. And listen, I do not want to be the spark of any issues for OMA. Thank you very much. So I do, you know, Eric's Law is something that I brought up a while ago. I think it was August of last year to the Policy and Governance Committee. And just as a refresher, Eric's Law, um, ended up going into a bill. It actually was signed today. I happened to be there, uh, which I'm really excited about. I'm such a proponent of this bill. And what it is, is we have scholars that are driving. So it's for, uh, drivers who have hidden disabilities. And it puts an emblem on their, um, ID card to, if they're ever pulled over for the, uh, police or, um, yeah, to know that they have a hidden disability to be able to interact a little bit differently, or at least to make them aware. And so I'm not looking for action at all today. I'm just looking to make you all aware that I would love to be able to talk this at a later time about how, if any, we are able to support that. Again, the bill was signed by the governor today. I think that's great. But, um, in the future, what I would love for the, the committee to consider is, um, a letter of support in the future to send to not only Eric, it's Eric's Law, and he has a hidden disability, but also just to hi- him and his family for the work that they've done, um, the commitment that they've had throughout this legislative session. I do recall talking to this committee and the chair, prior chair, now Vice Chair Briggs for this committee, um, about it. And I know it was before the legislation really started talking about what the bill was. So the guidance to me at that particular time was, hey, let's hold off and not put together a letter of support, a proclamation, declaration, whatever it is, um, as of yet. But now it has been signed into law and I really wish we were in front of this. But I think that there's something that we can do from the Board of Education because it does impact scholars. So I just wanted to bring that awareness to you all, um, in hopes that we'll be able to do something in the future for us to be able to talk about it. Thanks.
Absolutely. Ms. Welsh, you got your hand up? Sounds like you got.
I do. Um, Board Member Walker, do you, do you know the number of that, that bill that got signed today?
I do. Let me look it up.
Okay, I just, I'd be interested because, because I want to read it and everything.
Yeah, I'll send it to you if that's okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
He signed a lot of bills today.
Yeah, uh, well, thank you so much, Board Member Walker, for this update. I do, um, I do hope we can make some time to really elevate this. Um, perhaps, you know, we talk about this publicly during our presentation, um, to the board, um, next month, because we will have items. Um, so one, I do think there's an opportunity to uplift this. It does impact our students. And it's just another win from the legislative session that, uh, we can be able to talk about and put action to. So, so thank you for bringing this up and we'll make space for it. All right, friends, um, Policies for First Consideration discussion item. Um, I can tell you there are six of them, but we probably won't do all six of them, uh, tonight. Um, there will be two rounds per discussion and each round will be two and a half minutes. If a third round is required, a vote will be taken. Um, I do want to see if, uh, the, the committee, um, we'll, we'll prob- there are four of them. We'll do four. Um, I'm gonna try to get us to seven thirty tonight. Um, at seven thirty, um, I think we will need to make a hard stop in the interest of folks' time. Um, committee members, let me know if, if that's gonna cause an issue for any of you. Uh, you can text me on the side. Um, but please let me know if that's gonna cause an issue. But Ms., uh, if you could, um, take us through the telehealth policy, um, and Policy Three Hundred um, and community schools. Um, so if you could give us an overview of, of what's happening with these, but we'll start with the telehealth policy. Um, so the chair recognizes Ms. Welsh to present her guest speakers and provide an update on the new policy telehealth.
The telehealth, this policy is based on a law that was passed, uh, last, um, that twenty twenty four legislative session, which requires, uh, school systems to have a telehealth policy in place. Um, and it, the, um, the Maryland State Department of Education, in that particular bill that was passed, the Maryland State, uh, State Department of Education was required to put together guidance of which they did finally get it together by the end of December of twenty twenty four. And then there were meetings that were provided in February, um, for the, um, to give, provide more guidance to ensure that, uh, as each of the LEAs go ahead and develop their policy, that it's in alignment with what the, the guidance is for MSD. Um, fortunately, we were a little ahead of the game because we have been providing telehealth, um, to, uh, students and through our, through Hazel Health. And so, uh, this makes it a little bit, um, easier on our end to be able to implement, but it is a requirement. And then we are supposed to be, everything's supposed to be in place to provide telehealth beginning the, the twenty twenty, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So I will go through it, um, and just share with you, um, just the aspects of it that we are required to do. So the first part is just our policy statement, which just says that we believe that all, that the board believes that all, uh, that all students can reach full potential and succeed in school regardless of their personal, personal characteristics. And also that we're committed to providing equitable access for students to participate in telehealth appointments in the school setting. Um, and the purpose of the policy is to provide the framework for providing student access to the telehealth appointments. So if you could scroll down, Cindy. Um, and this just gives you a definition of eligible student and, uh, we'll keep going. A parent, and, um, these are actually, some of these definitions are ones that we have used repeatedly in other, um, policies. I, my goal is to try to have some standard definitions that we use in, in all the policies. So we have a understanding of what each of these mean. Um, so parent is another one. And then if you scroll down, uh, for, further, um, the school practitioner initiated telehealth is telehealth services between a student and a healthcare practitioner, external to a, um, external to a school when the school system has a formal agreement with the healthcare practitioner to provide healthcare services to its, its students. And then the definition of telehealth for what it is. I will point out that the guidance from MSD said that school systems can either provide the school practitioner initiated, uh, telehealth or where the parents actually initiate, um, um, the telehealth through their, um, their own, um, their own practitioners, their own doctors and everything. So because this is in place, um, that the school, this is, and the system has already chose that avenue of how we're gonna provide telehealth, that is, uh, what this policy will be addressing. So the first thing is, um, if you scroll down, is equity and prioritization of access to telehealth appointments. And so the superintendent does a knee, uh, will need to outline a process for how high schools will register to participate in, uh, telehealth and identify how each school will provide students with access to appointment times, space, scheduling for school initiated, initiated telehealth appointments. Um, and then, uh, any of the other parameters that might be needed in terms of limiting the number of appointments times for students, mainly just to make sure that there's equitable a- access for all students that would like to access it. Um, and then to also offer access to, um, uh, all students regarding, regardless of whether they have a disability or not. And to make the necessary modifications and accommodations for students with disabilities so they can actually access the telehealth appointments. And then if you scroll down further, Cindy. Uh, and then developing strategies to impact, uh, to address the impact of acute and ongoing appointments on educational outcomes, school culture and classroom instruction. In one of the meetings that I, uh, attended through the state, they, there were numerous school systems, uh, at the meeting, uh, staff from numerous school systems and probably one of the biggest concerns had to do with, uh, the interruption of instruction. And how would that work in terms of how an instructional day will be and, and what do you do when a student has missed instruction? Um, so anyway, if you continue, another big piece of this is confidentiality. Because not only are we required to, to, uh, meet all the, uh, FERPA requirements because it is a telehealth, a medical service, basically, we also have to comply with the HIPAA requirements for patient, uh, for privacy of patient information. And then, um, parental and student informed consent. And so parents or the eligible student shall provide informed consent for their child to receive, uh, telehealth. And it should also include an understanding of the services being provided, purpose, technology and potential risk and benefits. So, um, there would have to be an actual form that the parent would have to complete or the eligible student as it refers to the definition in this, um, uh, policy. And then communication and coordination of services. The superintendent shall develop a communication plan between parents, students and staff regarding the process of scheduling, advanced notice of appointments and compliance with, uh, the Prince George's County Public School Administrative Procedure, which will, which, which actually I did speak to Student Health Services and they already had begun the work on that the administrative procedure to go with this policy. And the, uh, superintendent designated shall include in the communication plan procedures for, uh, communicate, reg- communicating regularly with the parents about the services being provided, the student's progress and any recommendations made by the telehealth providers. So that, to do this, it's gonna be, there is an extreme amount of coordination and communication that has to occur between the parents, the school, the telehealth provider, so that everything is running very smoothly. And then if you go to the next one, in-person support protocols. The, um, the superintendent designated must develop protocols related to transitions from appointments that, um, that support students' needs and minimize classroom discuss, just disruptions as well as a plan for students who are unable to transition independently and who face challenges return to the classroom. Because we do have students that really can't travel down the hallways by themselves. They do need to have, um, um, someone with them as they go through that process. The other thing is, is that, um, the, the superintendent designated shall ensure that each school develops a plan for flexible scheduling strategies to addressing makeup work that are aligned with, uh, with, uh, board policy five, one, one, three, which has to do with attendance and parent involvement and helping to ensure the students are caught up on missed instruction. Um, and then if you continue, provision of services. Uh, um, the next one is that the superintendent designated shall consider feasibility of designing a space in each school that is confidential as an internet access provides a seating option with a flat surface and a nearby electrical outlet to accommodate placement of a laptop and is not a bathroom or a closet. Uh, and, and that of course comes from the, um, from the, uh, um, guidance from MSD. And then finally, to ensure that all school devices used for the telehealth service comply with, uh, with HIPAA and also with FERPA uh, and all the school's network infrastructure equipped with robust firewall protections, um, and, uh, secure and encrypted connections. So, uh, the implementation requirements are that the superintendent is directed to develop an administrative procedure to implement the policy. So that is about it in a nutshell.
All right. Um, so the question is, shall the committee recommend the new policy? There's no policy number yet, you all. Telehealth, um, to the policy sponsor for revision. Is there any discussion? Uh, Board, uh, Vice Chair Briggs.
Thank you, Committee Chair Moss. Um, Mrs. Welsh, I wanted to make a, a, a request for an amendment to, um, section four, A one. Um, and so I would like to amend the language to include collaboration with the nursing staff, uh, present, rep- that represent, uh, I'm sorry. Collaboration with nursing staff representatives across the district, whether through a survey or some other apparatus to co-create an effective plan that meets the realities of what nursing practitioners face daily. Um, I know it just mentioned about the superintendent doesn't even something together, but I would just really want to make sure that they're collaborating with the nursing staff.
That's fine.
Anyone else? All right. Um, the question is, shall the committee recommend um, the, the new policy telehealth to the policy funds for revision? Ms. Adelaide, please take a roll call vote.
Dr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Mr. Boozer Struthers?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Um, the telehealth policy, um, therefore in affirmative, the new telehealth policy will be recommended to the policy sponsor for revision approval. The next one we'll take up tonight is Policy Three Thousand Business. The chair recognizes Ms. Welsh to provide an overview of Policy Three Thousand.
Okay, Cindy, do you mind posting that, please? So this policy is an old policy that we had, um, and only had a little bit of information in it. So I did, uh, take the liberty to add a lot more information to it. Um, and actually it's in the Three Thousand series, but when looking at what's in the policy, I felt like that, that this might be one that we want to move over to the, uh, the zero, zero, zero series because that one has to do with commitments and this is, is not, uh, it's broad in terms of what the, the board is committing to in terms of the operation of the school system. So the, the policy statement, the fir- number A is that Prince George's County Board of Ed recognizes that resources and research management comprise the foundational support of the whole school program. And that could, does come from the original policy that's on, on the website currently. And then I added also that the board recognizes that effective work, ru- risk, resource management involves strategic and efficient allocation of Prince George's County public assets such as human capital, finances, equipment, technology to ensure that the foundational support is effective. And then if you scroll down, the purpose is, and I, I just happened to see this, I can't believe I did this. So I, I, as I'm doing, writing a policy, I'll go through and list in the definitions, what needs to be defined. And, um, completely forgot to put the definitions, but I will have that for you for the next, uh, meeting. Anyway, the purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines for effective support to ensure PGCSPS provides all students with equitable access to a quality education that promotes college and career readiness, social, emotional learning and supports the holistic well-being of students. So then the standards is under this area, if you scroll down, Cindy, is first of all, to encourage advanced planning through the best possible budget procedures and superintendent, the superintendent designated shall. And of course, that, that comes from the previous policy. And if you scroll down further, um, that the, um, will clearly, the, the superintendent will clearly or res- or designated will clearly define the resources required for each program, considering the skills, times and tools necessary, um, to, um, uh, this jumped, uh, is, uh, was, is formatting. Anyway, number two, anticipate upcoming needs based on PGAS strategic plan, federal and state statutory regular require, uh, regulatory requirements and the Maryland State Department of Education. So, um, basically making sure you're very clear about what is needed to complete all these different things. And then develop resource management plan that outlines how resources will be allocated and utilized over a specified time period. And then develop a comprehensive budget aligned with the school system strategic plan and then involve stakeholders in the budget process, budgeting process. Then if you go down to the next one, the next one, again, B comes from the, from the current policy to guide the expenditure of funds to achieve greatest educational returns, uh, the superintendent designated shall. And that's allocate funds equitably across schools and programs considering factors like student democ- demo- demographics and special needs and provide schools with adequate resources to support their instructional programs and operational needs. And then the next one, number C, uh, to require maximum efficiency through effective resource allocation utilization and accountability. Again, it comes from. To require maximum efficiency through effective resource allocation utilization and accountability. Again, it comes from the current policy that's on the website. And what under that is to the implement cost savings measures without compromising the quality of the students' education. And regularly reviewing and analyzing expenditures to identify areas of efficiency improvement. And then the next one is D, again, most of this comes from the previous policy to explore all practical and legal resources of income. And I did include in addition to federal, state and local funding and seek the resources required to provide high quality education. So in addition to all the funding we do receive, then to also take advantage of seeking out and applying for grants from federal, state and private sources, developing partnerships with businesses and community organizations to secure additional funding and resources. And exploring fundraising opportunities to supplement traditional funding sources. And then if we scroll down to the next one. E, now this is a new one that I added, to ensure that Prince George's County Public Schools Administrative Offices provide appropriate source support to the schools. The superintendent designated shall adequately staff administrative office with highly qualified employees, develop systems that provide efficient and effective management of the resources. And require administrative offices to collect and utilize data to make decisions regarding all aspects of the operation of the school system. Because just as tonight, when you asked many questions about the purchasing policy, I think one of the things that the school system really needs to be focused on is in all the work they do, no matter what the office is, is to continually be collecting and you and then taking that, collecting data about what they're doing, what the results are, those types of things, and then utilizing to make future, utilizing the data to make future decisions. And then the next thing, number F. If you scroll down, I have the superintendent designated shall set high standards for safety of the operation and maintenance of the school buildings. A schoolwork environment that promotes the health of students and staff. And supporting environmentally the efforts of staff to provide a quality education. Again, I have formatting issue. And then finally, the implementation, which is that the superintendent has authorized development administrative procedure to implement this policy. So this is really just a broad policy that's looking at the overall operation of the school system. And what is what the purpose of it is to in terms of the foundational to the to the operation of the system. To make sure that we are managing our resources effectively and providing the best services and education we possibly can.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh, for your presentation. The question is, shall the committee recommend policy three thousand business to the policy sponsor? For revision approval. Is there any discussion on this item? Board Member Briggs?
Yeah, I wanna I wanna apologize in advance. I wanna say that Ms. Adelaide, you should put the timer up. Thank you. And that I have a few things, so I might need a second round if others don't have things to say. But this this policy for me feels, well, for me, it feels very important because I think this is everything. I mean, it's so, it's like, it's where the money goes and it's how it how it flows through the different departments and everything that we've been saying, even when we voted down the Alvarez and Marcel consulting agreement, I think this is getting at like, we need to have a strong policy here. So saying that all to preface, Mrs. Welsh, that I can send over the language here, but I just want to kind of say this for the record. I was one for the first section for the purpose statement. I was wanting to amend the language to say high quality education. Just for the sake of saying that. The other is, I'd also like to add in the purpose statement, all students regardless of race, gender, ability, et cetera. However, you want to kind of frame that, just explicitly defines what all means. Also for that section, maybe it's social emotional competencies or competence. And I'd also like to add language that says supports the whole child. And there's there's language out there around like what the whole child means, but some, again, I can share this with you, but I just want to say there's this actual term in education jargon that you can find. So then I wanted to get into the nuts of both. So for the section four A five. I'd like to build out that language to say substantively involve stakeholders in the budgeting process. Mitigating time constraints and effective planning strategies for robust planning processes.
And you're gonna send me this, right?
Yeah, yeah. I also like to mention internal stakeholders such as streamlined budgetary processes that are in partnership with the grants office. As it talks about the grants office further down. And then it's also aligned with all applicable state laws and policies, i.e. the strategic plan. I guess my vision is like, I really would love to see the superintendent and team, like, when they're talking about the budget, it's like, this is our North Star, right? So it's like, it's the strategic plan, it's these really high level things. And when they go to the grants office, so when they go to wherever else that they have to partner with. They're getting information about what that office needs and they're able to plan and look across those different things based on different dimensions of whatever it is is guiding their planning. So you said the strategic plan in the in the in the policy. And I think that's great, but I would just love for that to kind of be like a, there are some conversation there. I said, I apologize in advance. The last thing I'll say, and then I did have a few more, was for four B one and two. I guess these were questions. Does the superintendent designate, I'm assuming this is Chief Howe. Use discretion when allocating funding needs, or is this formula funding already designated? Is this formula funding that's already designated in certain areas? Because it says that they should do this equitably. But then whenever we hear Chief Howe talk, she's always like, oh, well, you know, they're student-based budgeting and they get this amount of money and this is where the money goes. It's kind of like it's just already designated. She doesn't have a lot of free will. And so I just want to make sure the policy matches the reality. And then I said, if it's the latter that the superintendent designated doesn't have a lot of latitude there. Then I would instead want the language to be updated here to reflect the reality of state mandates. While employing the budget to highlight specific areas that are inequitably funded so that the board can have a line of sight into it. So, yeah, the last part I'll say, and sorry for taking the time here, is that instead of her thinking about this equitably. She's highlighting for us, hey, we have gaps here. So this school is not getting funding or this program is not getting funding for these reasons, and this is something that could be reported to the board. Versus I think her trying to mitigate it if she doesn't have that freedom to do so. And I'll stop talking there, but hopefully that makes sense, Mrs. Welsh, and I could send you more language. We can have a talk about it.
Yeah, thank you, Board Member Briggs. I do want to flag for committee members, our new process is like when we have these substantive changes like this, it's, we submit that in advance of the meeting so that this time can really be discussion and other committee members can see it. So I just want to flag that for our committee, when there are substantive changes in this way. Let's make sure we submit those in advance so that other committee members will be able to engage in a discussion. Because I don't know that I can engage with with these substantive changes now, but just just wanted to remind you. And Board Member Briggs. I see you, you put your hand right back up.
Yeah, I wanted to say, well, I wanted to say this. I think that that I think that's the best practice and I know that Mrs. Welsh probably has something to share, but so I don't want you to lose the idea. But I also just want to flag Committee Chair Moss that I think not everyone's gonna always have the opportunity with work in life to always have a chance to read the policy, so I just want to consider any barriers to that, to being able to give feedback. If that does exist, I don't want that to be an unintended consequence that it's like we have to do that in advance. I know for me, I just, I couldn't read it until like probably two hours before. And there was no way for me to get the information over Mrs. Welsh, so wanted to give that additional context and, you know.
I certainly appreciate, I certainly appreciate that. We'll continue to do everything we can to support you in that way. I do believe we've added calendar invites and things, but we'll continue to support you to make sure you can participate fully in the conversation. Ms. Welsh?
So I I just wanted to follow up on what Board Member, our Vice Chair Briggs said. So when I started writing this policy at first, when I first read it, I was like, what is this policy? There's hardly anything to it. But then when I really got into the meat of the policy and started thinking about it, I thought this is really a very, very important policy for the board. Because it's really talking about the the big picture, overall operation and what you want to see across the system. And so I appreciate your comments and and further discussion, just so that we are covering many of the different things that you're talking about. This, you know, this is a big system, first of all. Secondly, when you talk about equitable funding. What they, it's student-based funding, so depending on the number of students that you have. As well as, we also have a lot of state funding coming in that drives, like the blueprint funding that drives the 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 characteristics of your population, where one school might get more because of the nature of the students that you have in your school. But it is equitable in the sense that no one's school is getting a higher, higher per pupil basic found, you know, funding to start off, the foundational funding is is equal, you know, to all the schools. So there are, it's, it's not like Chief Howe has a tremendous amount of flexibility. Just because of all the, it's actually driven by state law in terms of how we do fund the schools. But it's also has been, I mean, I've heard all of you talk about this and I know it's, you know, in other areas. This conversation about ensuring that we do provide equitable funding for our schools. And we don't let any of the schools out in the process, so. But it's also bigger even in terms of operation of the school system because I've heard you say it and I heard you say it tonight in purchasing about where's the data to support this. You know, what's in, and I think there's all really important processes of how a system should operate to be as efficient and effective as it possibly can. So I look forward to your comments.
Yeah, I I was going to flag for you all for this policy. I would ask that, I was gonna flag that we not vote on this tonight. Because I think we do need a little bit more engagement around this policy. I think we need to engage Obama a bit. Because this does set up the framework for budgeting. I actually didn't make any comments in writing because I wanted to 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 hold on this one. Because I do think it's an opportunity to set up our budgeting framework. I know I've got colleagues on the call who also want to codify in policy how we communicate about our budget broadly, and so I think this policy can be directive in that way. So I do think we need a little bit more time on this one, so I was gonna say that we actually not vote to advance it tonight. So we can spend a little bit more time working on it, if the rest of the committee will accept that. Okay. Alright, I'm gonna move on to community schools and it's gonna be our last one, and I want to do it justice though. So community schools, Ms. Welsh, the chair recognizes Ms. Welsh to do an overview of policy eleven hundred, community schools. And we've done substantive work on this policy too. We did it early on, so so glad to see you back. If we could get a high level overview of what has changed since that last time, that would be great.
So I I want to share that when we met previously, we were responding basically we had made some changes based on on law from, I think, the twenty twenty four legislative session. With Senate Bill one sixty one, so we made some changes to it, but we also made changes. That for, if you recall, PGCEA had provided different recommendations for changes and we had Dr. Horton here who then talked about the different changes and one of the recommendations that came out of that meeting had to do with ensuring that we have like three administrators at at the steering committee so that we'd have an elementary, middle school and charter school principal available. So all of those changes are there, but I, at the time when we were about ready to move it forward. I said, well, you know, House Bill five oh four is sitting out there and there's language in that bill that actually could change some of the things we have in our community school. So that's what brought us to to stopping at that point in time and not doing anything further. So I wanted to go back to, can you go back to the beginning under definitions? And I will point out the changes that have been added as it relates to what was in five oh four. So if you look right here under needs assessment. We didn't have anything that really talked about the, to determine the needs of students in community schools for appropriate wraparound services to enhance this enhance the success of all students in the school. And actually, that is, that is, that is in the law that we are, when we do the needs assessment. It's not just to look at assets, needs and interests of the school community, but it's also to look at what are the necessary or appropriate wraparound services for our students. So I added that language and then if you scroll again, through it Cindy, I think you'll come to another highlighted area that I added some more language from the bill. And everything in blue was previous changes. Okay, right here. So then, if you recall, we had this, this whole conversation at the, when we reviewed this about the frequency of which the implementation would be, a plan would be reviewed. And so actually, they have put, changed it in the law that says number one, that the implementation must, implementation plan must contain measurable goals. And that they have to be measured at least once every two years. So the implementation, we had had a conversation about annually and then this came through and so it actually should be measured every two years instead of what we had, which was three years. And then each of the community schools should submit, it's actually, this is actually under the the communities, the community school coordinator, should submit the data to the superintendent designated annually regarding the numbers of students requiring wraparound services. The number of students and families provided with wraparound services, the types of services provided, families or and organization and community members who volunteer, rate of chronic absenteeism, student disciplinary actions. And strategies for reducing the rate of chronic absenteeism. And then number six says the superintendent designated shall submit to MSD each community school's data on an annual basis. So that is all new language based on the passage of House Bill five oh four. And then if you scroll down further. Keep going. This one says, utilize the MSD evaluation tool to assess progress made on the implementation plans, measurable goals of the established community school. And that, that again is from the from the the bill. And then this next language is new language that says, if you'll scroll down Cindy to the E, thank you. The superintendent designated may expend up to fifty percent of the funds received for community schools only if a plan is developed in consultation with the eligible community schools that ensure the provisions of the plan are consistent with the requirements of Education Article nine point nine of the Antetokounmpo Maryland. Expenditure of the funds must directly benefit an eligible school, including to provide central support to effectively manage program funds. And then if you'll scroll down Cindy further. And then enter into contracts with the outside service providers that support at least two community schools. And then coordinate spending on behalf of the community schools and any other administrative costs as defined by the MSD regulations. Which we don't have at this point. There'll be, I know they'll be updated based on this change in law. So all of those things were things that we, that are new from House Bill five oh four that I went ahead and added to the policy.
Thank you so much, Ms. Welsh, committee members. We're gonna vote on this. And I'll see if there's any discussion around it. I'm gonna rely on Board Member Boozer Strutter who follows this provision of the blueprint to let us know if we clean this this policy up. So I'll take a round of discussion and then we can vote on it, but I'm I'm counting on Board Member Boozer Strutter here to let us know that we've we've cleaned this up. The question is, shall the committee recommend policy eleven hundred, me, yeah, eleven hundred, community schools to the policy sponsor for revision? Any discussion? I guess that means we're good. We'll take a roll call vote. Alright, Ms. Adelaide?
Dr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Mr. Boozer Strutter?
Aye.
Ms. Walker? Foreigner, you have permission.
That policy has moved to, yeah, it's be recommended to the policy sponsor for revision and approval. I do want to take care of the policies for second consideration to move into public comment. So there are three items for consideration that will move to public comment. Policy zero one one one, sustainability plan. Policy zero one, zero one two three, artificial intelligence. And policy thirty three twenty three, purchasing. The question is, shall the committee release the policies under agenda items five point one through five point three for public comment? Ms. Adelaide, please call a roll.
Dr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Mr. Boozer Strutter?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Therefore, in affirmative, the policies under agenda items five point one through five point three will be released for public comment. And there are no policies for third consideration. First reader, the chair, oh, Ms. Rilsh, you got something for me? I see your hand.
I'm sorry, and I should have said this fast sooner, but did you want the purchasing policy to go out to public comment? Because I was gonna make changes for that, remember Walker had indicated need to be changed. Plus, you wanted to bring it back for for that her to bring more data, so I just asking the question.
It's the will of the committee, but once it come back to public comment, we can still make changes to it and respond to the public comments. But I'm happy to follow the will of the committee here. I didn't catch that either, but I mean, once it comes back to public comment, there's still an opportunity to continue to tweak it. So I guess we could get some engagement. Board Member Walker, I see your hand up. Happy to follow the will of the committee.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine either way. That's fine. We did ask for, well, I did ask for the data, so thanks in advance. I'm happy for it to come back when public comment comes back. Thank you for that. But the other piece I did want to ask is, for some reason, I did a lot of work on this, I want you guys to know. For about the seven thousand dollars for the board. And I sent it to Ms. Welsh in advance. I thought we were talking about it today, so whenever we do talk it. I did my homework early, clearly. I didn't mean to be that early, but it is early. I did my homework early, clearly. I didn't mean to be that early, but it is early.
You're such a, such a good student.
Good student, I'm telling you.
I'll make sure, I think picture is there next time. I think we got the legal opinion and we didn't put it on the agenda.
Yes.
We, when Cindy and Robin and I talked, so we'll take care of it next time. Uh, uh, Vice Chair Briggs?
Yeah, I personally, I, I really would love that to go out to the public. Cause I think one of them. Important things that we do is we provide to the public for them to weigh in on it and give comments and feedback. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna kind of, you know, um. Take that ability away from them to see any of these changes and to weigh in on that stuff. So I would, I would actually like it if. Instead of it going out to public comment first, that we actually make those changes. So that when it goes out, the public can see it and they can give their opinion on it. That's the purpose of public comment.
And, and, and I was, uh, can I just say one thing?
Sure.
Member Moss, it says that, I was gonna say that if, if we went out to public comment, but then we come back and we make more changes. We're gonna have to send it back out to public comment again, because the, the public is supposed to have the opportunity to see. What it is that we're gonna send to the full board for action so that they can comment on it. So for, for fairness to the public, I, I feel like, I mean, we can set it out twice, that's fine, but they really.
I don't know that that's our process in our, in our new policy development process. That second part, I don't think is included in our new policy development process.
What's, what's second part?
That one, if we make any modifications after public comment, it goes back out for public comment again. I don't know that that's our policy development process. I think we talk about the changes we made when it goes before the full board.
Well, normally, but in the past, I think what we've been done is tried to get all the changes done in advance before we ever send it out to public comment. So they see what the committee feels is like the best version of it before, but so that they have the opportunity to comment on it. So I think that's what Board Member Briggs is talking about, I think.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. And I think it's only fair that they have that opportunity to see it and to, to weigh in on it. Um, so I, I just think.
Yeah, what is the will of the committee at this point? I wanna make sure, what, what, what do we wanna do here?
You wanna put a motion on the floor?
You, you, I, you would need to rescind the, the motion that we just made and that you would need to rescind that. Decision, that your motion would need to be to rescind the decision we made, pull that item, then vote on all the other ones. And then hold the other one back. So that, that's what you would need to do since we've already voted. If you're not gonna make a motion.
Um, I'm happy to put the motion. Uh, I would like to, um, not move. So I would like to move to not send policy thirty three twenty three purchasing, um, out for public comment.
Um, you, you gotta vote to rescind the decision that we made.
Well, can you, you would need to.
Your motion needs to be to rescind the vote we just made on polit- on agenda items five point one through five point three. And then I'll have to take them separately, cause we've already formally made a decision.
Okay, um, did, the motion that you made, do you remember what you said? So I can rescind it. I can give the rescind, rescind, rescission language if you tell me the motion.
Gave it to you. You would need to make a motion to rescind the policies under agenda items five point one through five point three. Um, to send those items to public comment. Then after that, you're gonna need to make another motion. For five point one and five point two, I mean, five point one and five point two to go to public comment. And then that would leave five, policy thirty three twenty three out. So lots of moving here, I, for this.
Yeah, I think that's cause we voted. Um, okay, so I, I moved to rescind uh, items five point one through five point three. Um, to not go out for public comment. I think that's what you said, right?
Yes, that's, that's the motion you need to make.
Okay, that, that's the motion sadly.
Ms. Adelaide, uh, the motion is to not send these items out for public comment. Could you please call the roll?
Dr. Moss.
No.
Mr. Briggs.
Aye.
Mr. Strutter.
Aye.
Ms. Walker.
Aye, it's fine.
Three and the affirmative.
Alright, so which, so now you need to make a motion for the ones that you want to go out to public comment.
Um, I'm happy to move, uh, so for items five point one through five point two to go out for public comment.
The motion's been made for items five point one and five point two to go out for public comment, which is sustainability plan and artificial intelligence. Ms. Adelaide, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Moss.
Aye.
Mr. Briggs.
Aye.
Mr. Strutter.
Aye.
Ms. Walker.
Aye.
Um, items five point one and five point two will move to public comment. Um, and because item five point three is under second consideration. Um, thirty three twenty three, there needs to be a motion to table this item. Um. Leave it alone.
I wanna, can I make a motion that we get the data today so we can move it forward for public comment? I know it's past the time, it's seven thirty eight at this particular time. I'm wondering if the board will consider, because it was already on the agenda. If we can hear the data that Ms. Welsh has brought to the table and researched so that we can make a determination of action tonight.
Oh, thirty three twenty three?
Yeah, you're not prepared for that. You don't wanna do that. Can we have discussion?
I'm more than happy if she's got the data.
I don't have the data.
Oh, I thought you had the data. I was.
Now I'm waiting to get it from purchasing. I wish I had the data, but no, they're the ones that have to give me the data.
Can you just remind me specifically what I asked for? I'm sure I have a list somewhere, but just so I can know if it's something that I wanna still move forward for. Cause clearly I'm the one to ask for it.
Yeah, you asked for data around how this will impact their workloads and the.
I did. I did, um, I do still wanna know that, sorry y'all.
And you wanted to know also what the impact will be for the board in terms of workload too, for the, for how many policies, I mean, how many, yeah, um. Contracts will be coming to you.
Yeah, I just think it helps us to organize a little bit better.
Wait for it. We, we meet again when? Uh, two weeks thing, yeah. So I, I, I wouldn't need a motion. This is just hanging on the agenda, I think.
Oh, yes. I'll make a motion, um, that we postpone the discussion in action. Uh, to move forward on this particular policy.
Ms. Adelaide, the motion's been made to postpone policy thirty three twenty three purchasing uh, to the next meeting. Um, Ms. Adelaide, will you call the roll?
Dr. Boss.
Aye.
Mr. Briggs.
Aye.
Mr. Strutter.
Aye.
Ms. Walker.
Aye.
Or you affirmative.
Um, at this time, the Chair informs the public that the final virtual policy and governance committee meeting for the school year will be on June seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Please continue to check the Prince George's County Board of Education website for meeting information and updates. Thank you all for great discussions and attendance to our viewers. Thank you for watching. There being no further business, the time is now seven forty. The May thirteenth, twenty twenty five Policy and Governance Committee meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Ms. Walsh.